Back to order, the regular meeting of Lane County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. And our first item of business is Item 12A, which is the second reading in public hearing for ordinance number PA 1315 in the matter of co-adopting the Coburg Urbanizing Study update, expanding the urban growth boundary for industrial and residential land needs to redesignate land from traditional residential and rural residential and agriculture to medium and high-density residential, light industrial, and mixed-use plan designations, adopt corresponding amendments to the official Lane County Rural Comprehensive Plan, and adopting savings and severability clauses, file number 509PA 1405404. So this decision of the board is subject to establishing findings of fact showing compliance with the applicable comp plan policies and Lane Code criteria cited in the staff report. Evidence and testimony must be directed towards the approval criteria. Testimony not directed towards the approval criteria may be irrelevant to this land use proceeding. No person shall address the board without receiving recognition from the chair. And I presume there's still sign-up sheets in the back in case you've missed them, but I've got the sign-up sheets here that if you wish to address the board during the public hearing, please sign up. And I don't think I have to admonish anybody about cheering and clapping. You know, that's not appropriate during a public hearing. This is the opportunity for those present to enter information into the record, verbal and/or written. And written materials related to the application submitted prior to or during the public hearing shall be considered part of the record. We also have the option to keep the record open, but that'll come later. Failure to raise an issue to enable a response may preclude your ability to appeal to Luba on that issue. So if you have an issue, it needs to be raised at this time. Only persons who qualify as a party are going to be able to appeal the actual decision, so if you wish to be a party now at this time. So with that introduction, I'll move on to our staff presentation, and we have Lindsay Eitner from our planning department. So Lindsay, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The item before you today is a request from the City of Coburg to co-adopt amendments to the Coburg Comprehensive Plan and related amendments to the Lane County Comprehensive Plan. The proposal includes co-adoption of the Coburg Urbanization Study and urbanization or the and urban growth boundary expansion and related plan designation changes for the properties being proposed to be brought into the urban growth boundary. The urbanization study recommended that approximately 152 acres be added to the Coburg urban growth boundary to meet a 20-year forecast need for residential land. The urbanization study also supported the addition of one or two 20-plus acre parcels for regional economic opportunity needs. So the city is proposing to add two acres of high-density residential land, 15 acre acres of medium residential land, approximately 131 acres of traditional residential land, and 105 acres of light industrial land, all to be added within the urban growth boundary. The city had held multiple hearings before their planning commission and their city council between March 2012 and September of 2014. Their city council approved the proposal on September 12th, 2014. The city staff sent the appropriate notice in a timely fashion to DLCD. And we held a work session with our planning commission in November of 2014 and held a public hearing before our planning commission in December, on December 2nd, 2014. Issues were raised at that public hearing, questioning if the city had correctly justified the UGB expansion. And after the public hearing, a motion was passed by the planning commission to direct staff and city to review the proposal as a whole and report back in April with additional information to be supplemented into the record. City staff took those concerns back to their city council. They held meetings and they revised their findings and then came back, adopted a revised ordinance. And then we held a second public hearing before our planning commission on September 15th. And after reviewing the additional information into the record, hearing testimony from city staff, hearing testimony from the public, and through a thoughtful deliberation process, the planning commission majority made a motion that was passed to forward a positive recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners. The votes were seven yes, one no, and one of the commissioners, it was her very first meeting, so she abstained from making a vote. Staff has reviewed the city's application. They have addressed all of the approval criteria that are required for a UGB expansion. Staff supports the planning commission's recommendation and recommends approval of ordinance PA 1315. Staff notes that additional information has come into the record within the last, within yesterday and today, some even just this afternoon. And I will let city staff, besides the information that was just submitted into the record, which they haven't had a chance to read yet, I will let the city respond to the information that was handed out in your supplemental memo yesterday. That concludes my report.
Any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? Seeing none, then I will open the public hearing. And I will call first the City of Coburg. And as it's your application, I'll be fairly lenient on the time constraints, but if you hope we do have several other items to get to this afternoon, so to an extent.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll try and talk fast. My name is Milo Meacham. I am the city attorney for the City of Coburg. I'm here representing the applicant to City of Coburg in this land use matter. I wanted to start by just talking briefly about the process. The city's examination of its urban growth boundary and the possibility of growth started around 2003. The city went through the statutory process and determined that it was probably going to grow beyond its current capacity and would need to expand the urban growth boundary. But there were, there was a significant constraint in that the city was dealing with groundwater problems and was trying to work out a sewer and wastewater system, but didn't have that. So it decided to table that for a while and move on. And in 2010, the city knew it was getting ready to build a sewer system and it was sure that it was going to have that done. So it started the process again, but it never really finished the process because it wasn't clear when the sewers were going to be done. Then again, 2012, 2014, the city was in the midst of construction of the sewer process. It had, it had a clear idea of when it was going to be completed, and it wanted to be prepared for that completion. That's important because the city has been down this road many times. Each analysis has been thorough and well-reasoned. Each analysis has involved a number of public meetings where the city's gotten input from the general public and so forth. Each analysis has involved a technical advisory committee where staff from Lane County, staff from DLCD have been involved and have been advising the city. So the process has been thoroughly vetted. And I'll come back to that as I go through it, but I just wanted to give you an understanding that the city is serious about this process, that the city has done its due diligence probably several times over. And as Lane County staff has suggested, when we came before the Lane County Planning Commission last year, there were questions raised. We thought that we had the answers already in the process, but we went back, reexamined it, strengthened it a little bit more, and came to the planning commission, and it worked then, and here we are tonight, today. So what I wanted to do is to talk about the issue that has been the major focus of concern about the process, and that is where the urban growth boundary is going to expand. There doesn't seem to be any question that the population forecasting, the housing needs analysis that the city has gone through definitely shows that there is a need for additional acreage inside the city. The urban growth boundary as it exists now will not accommodate the next 20 years' growth. So the city, as I said several times, has gone through the process of looking where it might grow. There's a statutory process that is in ORS 197, 298, and we'll be talking about that. And that says that if the city's going to expand its urban growth boundary, it needs to look first to urban reserve areas. Urban reserve areas are those areas that the city has previously said, "Well, we'll grow in the next 50 years into these areas." Coburg has not done that analysis, so there are no urban reserve areas. The next process that the statute requires is that the city look at what are called exception areas. That is, areas within the Rural Comprehensive Plan where there has been an exception taken, and they're not identified as natural resource lands. When the city went through its analysis, it looked at a total of 11 areas and analyzed all the properties surrounding the entire city. And this map indicates the analysis, and they're divided up by different sections. And in some places, if you read through the discussion in detail, it talks about Area 5 or Area 6, or something like that. And so this is a reference to that. When we look at exception areas, there are some exception areas around Coburg. There's one here and one here. These are small areas. As staff indicated, the city's identified a needle of 150 acres, give or take a few acres, and this is not going to meet it. This exception area here is, was analyzed, but it's not really viable either. It's separated from the city by ag land. It's small, and it's completely surrounded by active agricultural uses. So the area that the city focused on, and it is a topic of discussion, is what's referred to as Area 5. This is the area north and west of Coburg. This is Stallings Lane, so it's oftentimes referred to as the Stallings Lane property. The city did an analysis of that exception area to see whether it would meet the city's needs. Ultimately, the city determined that it would not meet the city's needs, and therefore the city decided that it needed to bring in some agricultural property. And we'll get to that in a minute. But I want to talk about the analysis that the city went through to determine that the Stallings Lane area was not suitable, and the conclusions that it reached as a result of that analysis. Stallings Lane right now is an exception area. It's made up of a multitude of five to 10 acre parcels that, it's all divided up. Most of it now is hobby farms. It is, it's the highest quality ag land in the area, so it's in agricultural use, a lot of it is, even though it's an exception area. But that's, under the statute, that doesn't make any difference. When the city looked at the Stallings Lane property, it held public hearings, and the Stallings Lane people were able to come in. And there were a number of people from the Stallings Lane area that objected to the idea that they would be included. They indicated that they did not want to be developed, that they were just, they were happy where they were, they didn't want to be part of the city. And that's discussed in the urbanization study on page 47, I think, if you want to make reference to it. But nevertheless, the city had to go through the analysis, and as I said, it concluded that Stallings Lane wouldn't work. There's multiple reasons for that. One important reason is that, as I mentioned, the city has finally developed a wastewater system. City's gone into debt, you know, it costs $27 million to build a wastewater system. So the city is not anxious to go into debt further to extend the wastewater system out on Stallings Lane, which means that the developers of the property, if this property is brought inside the city, those developers will have to bear the cost of that. In the same way that the city would have to have those developers bear the cost of extending the water line out there. That's some, between $200,000 and $300,000. Now, if you take the whole exception area and just divide up the cost, it may not seem like it's too much. But practically speaking, what's going to happen is that one of these parcels somewhere in here is going to want to develop first, and the city's going to say, "Okay, if you want to develop, you have to pay for the water line and the sewer line to go out there." So you have to bear that $250,000 cost all by yourself. Now, if you're dealing with 100 acres and you can subdivide the property up and spread that out over, you know, 200, 300 homes, $250,000, $300,000 is not much. But if you're talking about a five-acre parcel here that is going to divide up into maybe at most 10, 10 properties, and those 10 properties are going to have to absorb the entire cost of running the sewer line out there, that's, that makes it impractical for any one of these to develop. Now, the third or fourth one that develops out there might be okay, but the first one is never going to happen. So from a practical standpoint, the infrastructure costs are a significant barrier for any of these properties to develop. We also have the infrastructure concerns that the city has inside the area. There are two intersections in the city that are in serious trouble, and the transportation analysis shows that if something is not done, these intersections are going to end up failing within the next 20 years. That is the intersection here at Pearl and Willamette, and the intersection up here of Coburg Road North and Van Dyne. The problem is, is that if development is done along the Stallings Lane, all that property, I mean, all those people out there that are developing are going to want to come through town, either into town or through town, and they're all going to come through these two intersections that are already failing. So if you put people out there, you're going to hasten the failure of those intersections. For all those reasons, Coburg determined that it wasn't practical to include all of the Stallings Lane property in the urban growth expansion. It just wouldn't work, because, again, what Coburg needs to do is Coburg needs to plan for 20 years. This property might be available, but given all these barriers, it's probably going to still be available in 20 years, because nobody's going to develop the property. The property owners don't want to develop it, the cost of development is going to be extremely high, and the infrastructure-related problems that are associated with development are going to make things worse in the city. So nobody's going to want to live there. So it's not practical to use all the Stallings Lane properties. There are also planning reasons in Coburg's comprehensive plan in the statewide goals that argue against this. Coburg is committed to compact and contiguous growth. This is the epitome of non-compact, non-contiguous growth. To take a city here and make a major extension of the city way out to the north just doesn't make any sense from a planning perspective. Also, Coburg is committed to and is working hard on alternate modes of transportation, bike and ped especially, developing a Coburg loop path and encouraging people to use these alternate modes of transportation. If Coburg was to grow out Stallings Lane, all those bike, ped incentives would disappear because nobody's going to want to walk along Coburg Road here, which is a heavily trafficked area. Nobody's going to want to walk through this intersection, especially if all those people who live out there are driving along that road to get to town, to get the kids to school, all those kinds of things. So from a planning perspective, Coburg's commitment in its comprehensive plan, growing out there doesn't work. It's poor planning. So it's impractical, it's poor planning. So what Coburg decided to do is it had to look at other areas that might better meet Coburg's needs. It looked at the exception areas, this exception area and this one over here, and brought those in, down to where the area becomes, this exception area becomes really questionable because it's in the floodplain and so forth. But that's not enough. Coburg, if Stallings Lane properties are out, Coburg needs to look at agricultural land. Now, if you're familiar with the statutory requirements, what it says is that when you determine that exceptions lands don't work, then you look at agricultural land. And you're supposed to pick the lowest priority lands. This is a map of the Coburg area. The poorest quality soils, lowest priority lands are down at the bottom, Class 8, going up to the best in Class 1. Well, you'll immediately notice that one of the ironic things about Stallings Lane, and I mentioned this before, is that this is the best agricultural land not already developed in Coburg around in the area. This area over here, which we'll get to in a minute, is some of the poorest agricultural land in the area. Certainly the poorest in the area and among the poorest in Lane County. So we've got, we've got to look at the analysis of farmland. What Coburg did when it, when it went through the process is that it looked at the exception areas and looked at where was the best place to go. And it immediately, in terms of residential development, immediately ran up against the problem that there was, unless you wanted to grow residentially over here, which is really, again, a problem for all the same reasons that I talked about Stallings Lane being a problem, there's no bad agricultural land available. So you immediately move up to the higher priority lands, simply because that's all that's available. Coburg chose to include this, a portion of this property here. This is a map that shows the recommended, Coburg's selection of properties. Again, it's bringing in a portion of Stallings Lane, the portion that's at least far away, it's going to have the lowest infrastructure costs, the lowest infrastructure impact. It's also bringing in some agricultural land. This parcel here is really one parcel of agricultural land. You'll notice that it is surrounded on two sides and a portion of a third side even now with the City of Coburg. So although it's agricultural land, you know, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, when Lane County was doing its exceptions analysis, it would have been probable that if the analysis had been done, this could have been exception land too, but it wasn't. It's farmland, and it's still used as farmland, but it's surrounded by the city on two sides. And the growth out Stallings Lane would, of course, surround it on three sides. So what Coburg decided to do is to include a portion of that ag land as, inside the urban growth boundary for residential use. This brings up another important factor, and one that came in later on in the analysis, but was another reason arguing against Stallings Lane. When Coburg did its urbanization analysis, it determined that it needed some high-density and medium-density properties. The idea of putting those properties out Stallings Lane wouldn't work, because, again, that's, those are small parcels, they're, many of them are not of appropriate size to locate the higher densities on. Those are going to be, you know, small property developments, and nobody there is going to want to develop a high-density property and stick all those people out there. So one of the advantages of bringing in this agricultural land is it puts the high-density properties close to the rest of the city. It takes the properties away from this as a troubled intersection, because the traffic can flow down through here and avoid that troubled intersection. It's another advantage, it's another reason to include that agricultural land. So this is the process that the city went through. I mentioned that they included the exception areas down here, portions of the exception areas down here. They included a part of the agricultural land down here as well. But if you look at the maps, that's agricultural land that is not used for agriculture. That, this large parcel along there, you can see that there's an old stream bed that runs through there, and the area north of that has never been farmed actively. It's got residents on it, it's got trees on it. So bringing that inside doesn't really harm the agricultural use of the properties. The main issue that has been raised, though, is inclusion of this agricultural land, which is not the highest priority land, but which is higher priority land, and the city feels that it's justified in doing so because of the analysis that I took you through. So I'm almost done. The last thing I want to talk about is the employment land issue. When the city went through its original analysis, it found that, looking just at the housing, jobs need of the City of Coburg itself, it had sufficient commercial land and sufficient industrial land. However, because of the last Great Recession, the state legislature has changed the rules in terms of employment land analysis. Cities now are required to look at regional employment needs as well as their individual city employment needs. Coburg is and was praised by DLCD at one point in the process for being the first city to undertake this process appropriately. And DLCD helped out in many of the analyses as we went through it. Looked at the regional need and identified a regional need for many large parcels, 20 acres or more of developable land in, for employment needs. And the criteria in terms of proximity to transportation corridors and all those kinds of things are met by Coburg's land. Coburg looked at its properties inside the City of Coburg, and Coburg determined that there were no available properties inside the city. Just a brief deviation, 1,000 friends has submitted something to the record where they suggest that Coburg could have rezoned some of its properties. And what they're talking about are these properties here, which are cumulatively just exactly 20 acres. So they don't, they don't meet the 20 acres or larger-sized requirements that were identified. And plus, that analysis looks at developable potential. If you take a 20-acre parcel and you put the infrastructure, streets and so forth on the property, then it's no longer 20 acres. So you need more than 20 acres in order to end up with 20 developable acres. Coburg found that there was not sufficient property inside the city to meet any of the regional needs. Coburg is not trying to meet the entire regional need. Looked at, you know, the region's need was for, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't recall the area total, but Coburg decided that it could accommodate approximately 10% of the region's need. So there's still 90% of the rest of the cities to fight over. We're only dealing with 10% of the need, bringing in these parcels. Now, this parcel is larger than, it's approximately 100 acres. And so it's, it can accommodate more than the two 20-acre parcels, except that a lot of the property is wetlands. If the property is going to be developed at all, it needs to have a frontage road built along here on Van Dyne, and we'll talk about that when we get to the TSP. So there's, even though it's 100 acres, when you get practically down to using So, there's, even though it's 100 acres, when you get practically down to using it, it's less than that. It's also all being brought in because the property owner said, "Fine, if you want to bring it in, we're all for that, but don't cut it in half and leave part of it because the part that you would leave is never going to be any good for agriculture." This is lousy farmland anyway, so the city accommodated that need. And it can do that under the law and brought all of that in. So, I'm summarizing now, Commissioner. This is what Coburg is proposing to do, to meet its statutory requirements of having a 20-year supply of land, to meet its statutory requirements to provide employment land for the region, a share of employment land for the region. Coburg feels that it's gone through the process appropriately, done all the analysis multiple times. As I said, DLCD has been involved in the process from the beginning and has assisted Coburg and advised Coburg along the way. Coburg has taken all that into account and was appropriately responding to DLCD, and DLCD indicated that they were satisfied at one point. Recently, they've reversed that, and if that's necessary, I'll talk about that. But Coburg has gone through the process. Coburg has established a clean, justifiable urban growth boundary exception. And we request that you approve it and move it on to the next step. Thank you. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions for City?
Are we going to hear all the witnesses first before we do questions?
Yeah, I think that might be a question. We might call you back up.
Great, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have Raymond Fisher. And I'll call Dan Terrell next.
Good afternoon. Raymond Fisher, 37801 Upper Camp Creek Road, Springfield, Oregon. I am one of the members of Interstate Properties LLC, the owner of the industrial land and the proposed urban growth boundary east of I-5. The Coburg Urban Growth Boundary Expansion has been a long process. It started with the Coburg Crossroads Program back in 2003, went through many levels of community involvement to arrive at the current version before you today. Through a collaborative effort between ElCog, Coburg, Landholders and stakeholders, the current expansion closely models the wishes for the residents of the city. I-5 offers both Coburg and Lane County an opportunity for job growth through this expansion. There's a shortage of large billable industrial lots, especially lots with freeway access in Eugene-Springfield area. Our company has already received interest from multiple out-of-the-area companies with the intent to purchase land and provide jobs to the region. This expansion really has the opportunity to benefit many parties, from Coburg and Lane County to the people who will fill those jobs in the upcoming years. We support the proposed UGB expansion and ask the Commissioner's support as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Terrell.
Chairman Commissioners, I'm Dan Terrell with the Law Office of Bill Close. We represent Interstate Properties. We're at 375 West Fourth Street, Suite 204 in Eugene. And I'll try not to repeat what Mr. Meacham or my client has said, but would like to touch a bit on the regional economic analysis that's contained in the record and in which the city has based its proposal. That analysis is the first analysis by local government in the area that really is focused on trying to quantify the regional economic opportunities that are out there. There are jurisdictions who've come out and said, "We want so many acres," but don't have the evidence to support it. In the record is the evidence to support the city's proposal. That analysis examined, targeting 0% of the regional employment need, 10%, 20%, and 30%. And the city's proposal represents nominally that 10% target. And that target was also the recommendation by the proposal because they said, "Based upon the attractiveness that the city has demonstrated historically due to its proximity, its access to I-5, that it should be able to meet that need." As Mr. Meacham mentioned, that analysis, the 10% number is 97 acres, and the proposal is 105 acres for light industrial. But as Mr. Meacham mentioned, frontage road acreage will be taken out of that, infrastructure supporting your development will be taken out of that, and then you have wetlands and hydroxic soil issues that will have to be dealt with. So, we're looking at Coburg believing that it can attract nominally 8% to 10% of the regional need that's been established. One of the things I would like to identify to you is that a lot of the critics of the process have focused on language that was used that says, "Two 20-plus acre parcels." We all like to conflate language over the years. It got boiled down to "two 20-acre parcels." That's not what the city is targeting. The city is targeting this 10%. This is 20-plus acre parcels. You're familiar with other jurisdictions that may break down large industrial sites from 20 to 50-acre parcels and 50 to 100-acre parcels. The city is looking at that industrial target as a single group, and so they may have one client coming in wanting 100 acres. They may have a client, someone who comes in who wants a 70-acre parcel and another wants a 30-acre parcel. So, the city's request is not unreasonable, and it is consistent with the analysis. And the last point that I'd like to touch upon, which I think places a lot of the concerns expressed about the employment land proposal into perspective, is the rules for UGB expansion and the rules that say cities should take a look at this regional economic need do not provide any mechanism to make sure that, once all the cities have reached out and said, "We want this acreage, we want that acreage, we want this acreage," there's no mechanism out there to ensure that only 100% of the pie gets divvied out and that at the end of the process, there's not this huge surplus of unmet industrial land needs. They're right. It's something that should concern everybody. However, you are the gatekeepers. You're the ones who can say, "Is 8% to 10% reasonable for the city of Coburg?" If the city of Eugene comes in and wants 75%, who's the one to say, "Wait a second, are you asking for too much of the pie?" And once the different proposals come through, you're the ones that are able to say, "Okay, we're going to moderate proposals. Yes, that's reasonable." If a jurisdiction comes in and says, "We don't want to go after any of the regional need," you may ask, "Why not? There's a lot of unmet need out there." But you are the gatekeepers, and until the rules are out there, everyone should be concerned that, going through this process, that this regional industrial land need is met but not exceeded. Given that, Coburg is the first one, the first city who's done the analysis, they're the first ones through the door, and they're asking for a reasonable amount of land. So, we encourage you to approve the proposal. Interstate Properties will be continuing to support the city's efforts throughout this process. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I have Lee Kirsten and then Mia Nelson. You'll state your name and where you're from for the record.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. My name is Lee Kirsten. I live at 91640 Stallings Lane. That's the north end of Stallings Lane that was not included in the proposed UGB. I strongly oppose that decision. I've lived on that lane for over 30 years. I haven't talked to all of my neighbors, but I have talked to the majority of them, and none of the ones I've talked to are opposed to inclusion in the urban growth boundary. These parcels are the larger parcels on Stallings Lane. They're the more developable parcels. The statements relating to the cost of development, to me, are incomprehensible. First, why does it make sense that it's not too expensive to extend services to part of Stallings Lane, but then not to the rest of it? The incremental cost of the extension is only the incremental cost. Secondly, the transportation plan that you're asked to co-approve proposes a major arterial that would intersect Stallings Lane. Seems to me that pretty much resolves all the traffic problems. The school is essentially one house away from Stallings Lane. My kids and all the other kids already walk to school. I don't see any problem with that. I've been involved in the process since the beginning. I've been to the charrettes at the school, been to the meetings at the Grange Hall, the IWOF Hall. Certainly initially, I didn't want to get put in the UGB. But once the, from my perspective, ElCog basically rammed through their proposal, it seemed to me that it was really inappropriate to break up a community in a neighborhood like Stallings Lane. That is a neighborhood. With all due respect to Jerry Rust, the problem with his proposal of the Emerald Canal through town is not that it was a bad idea, it was that it broke up neighborhoods. And planning is not about neat little lines on a map. Planning is about people and arranging for their needs. And I would respectfully suggest that the people at the north end of Stallings Lane's needs will not be served. If you block us off, we're dead in the street. So, we have no way to get in and out. So, I don't see how we're supposed to maintain any type of realistic agricultural use if we're going to be hauling our horse trailers and our tractors through the development that are proposed for the south end of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Mia Nelson.
I emailed my testimony to you. Did you have color copies of it? Would you like color copies? You'll have one.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to call ElCog.
You need one? Anyone else?
I'll take it up. I will not hear Mia, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Mia Nelson. I represent 1,000 Friends of Oregon. We have several hundred members in Lane County. So, on the surface, this appears to be a very complicated decision, but fortunately, it's actually very simple. On the residential expansion, the only real dispute, as Milo told you, is whether or not the city has met the statutory test to expand on the prime farmland instead of rural residential. And to that end, although other reasons have been discussed, from a legal perspective, the city is relying on only three, and I discussed this in my letter. One, the proposition that picking rural residential land instead of farmland would have adverse consequences on agriculture. The proposition that some of the property owners don't want to come in and that that's an adequate reason to not bring it in, and the idea that it's too expensive to extend water and sewer. And I cite information in the record that the cost for water and sewer is only about $4,000 per acre, which is, I think most developers would think that was quite a bargain to get it for that cost. I'm actually not aware of any other city that has successfully claimed, used claims like that to bypass farmland. I'm not even aware of any other cities that have tried it. Our testimony explains why the city misunderstands the state's criteria and also why both the facts in the record and even in the city's own findings don't actually support the conclusions that the city made. Regarding the industrial land, this is also simple. The city's own jobs forecast projected 615 new jobs on vacant land over the next 20 years, and they then found that they need a total of 20 acres of industrial land to accommodate the industrial part of that job growth. The city then found it already has 28 acres inside the UGB now, and actually have a surplus. And despite this, the city claimed that it needs all of that plus at least one more additional 20-acre parcel brought into the UGB. And this just, I mean, it doesn't work because the city is obligated to base its need on the 20-year need for jobs that it established. It's the city's own jobs forecast that's going to drive this. Land is set aside for job and population growth, and the city really locked itself in when it determined that it only needs 20 acres to meet its 20-year predicted job growth. This claim of regional need is wrong. It might not have been wrong if the city had actually adopted a regional analysis, but it did not. I don't know if that's clear. That was prepared by the landowner. It was not adopted by the city, and if you read the findings, the city is not relying on that document to justify its land need. It is true that the city's relying on its prior claim that it needs one or two 20-acre parcels, but even that claim is not tied to the 20-year job growth. They've also not established that that property is serviceable. In fact, in the residential part of the analysis, the city concluded the property couldn't be served. Just in plain English, the proposal's illegal, it's not even a close call. And if you adopt this, it's not going to be a defensible decision, and I think it will reflect badly on the county. And I realize no one on the board wants to disappoint Coburg, but you would be doing us all a favor, including Coburg, to just take a short time out and do a little more investigation. I don't want to disappoint Coburg either, and I want to assure you that 1,000 Friends regularly supports expansions onto farmland. We're supporting Eugene's expansion onto almost 1,000 acres of farmland because they met the burden of proof. This is not about opposing something just because it's farmland. We're opposing it because it's illegal. I'll just close with saying DLCD's written you a letter as well, saying that it doesn't comply with the law. I see there's a DLCD representative in the audience, and I would encourage you to ask them some questions and make an informed decision on this. Thanks.
Thank you. And I do have Gordon Howard signed up, but basically he says he's just available for questions, so I assume, unless, there you are, okay. Unless there's a specific question for the LCD, I won't call you up to testify just to tell us that. But if the board has one, you may be coming up. So, that is everyone I have signed up to testify. Was there anyone that got missed that would like to testify? So, with that, I'll turn to the board and ask if they have any questions of folks providing testimony.
I'll ask Mr. Howard some questions.
Yeah, and I will give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal at the end of this, seeing we're getting into questions.
So, you heard the testimony today?
Yes. By the way, my name's Gordon Howard with the Department of Land Conservation Department.
You were mentioned in some of the testimony as having, the department having written a letter to the Board of Commissioners, and I'm wondering if you could summarize your letter for us.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorenson, Chair Bozovic. The letter we wrote, which is dated June 16th, 2014, to the city of Coburg, addresses two basic issues. First of all, that the city needed to make additional findings to justify putting residential urban growth boundary expansion onto farmland. The city's findings, we believe, were inadequate to justify that. We were willing to work with the city to see if they could craft findings that would meet muster. As far as, they have not done that, and we haven't seen any additional written findings that would indicate a better argument for putting the residential development on the farmland. The second issue we had was with the employment land. We, looking at the materials that Coburg provided, determined, agreed with the city that they were justified in having, adding one to two 20-acre employment sites. So, we did see that there was justification. We also believe that their analysis picked the correct parcel on which to add that land. The problem is, the city is proposing to add over 100 acres of employment land when their need is for 20 to 40 acres. And so, that really summarizes the, and so the department has some concerns with that as well.
And could you tell the board a little bit about what the role of the department or the commission or the Land Use Board of Appeals is, assuming the board and the city of Coburg both agree to approve the urban growth boundary expansions, even though the department has raised issues about the reasons for the residential expansion onto farmland and that there might be a justified 20-acre, one or two 20-acre parcels, but not four or five acres. and that there might be a justified 20-acre, one or two 20-acre parcels, but not four or five times that amount? What happens, maybe phrase it another way, so what? What's the next step, assuming that the two jurisdictions, Coburg and Lane County, both want to do this?
Well, Commissioner Sorenson, Chair, the next step, if the board approves what the city of Coburg has, or also co-adopts what the city of Coburg has done, is that unlike a lot of large urban growth boundary expansions, because Coburg has a population of less than 2,500, any appeal of your decision would go to, would have to be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. They would hold a hearing. Now, the department has the ability to file such an appeal, that's a decision, actually the commission does, that would be a decision of the Land Conservation Development Commission. I do not know at this time if the department or the commission would, the department would recommend and the commission would actually file such an appeal. Any other party who's a, you know, a party to the hearing could also file such an appeal. So the Land Use Board of Appeals would consider any appeal of your board's decision, and any decision of the Land Use Board of Appeals could be appealed to the Oregon Court of Appeals and then potentially to the Supreme Court.
Okay. And now, have you dealt with other urban growth boundary expansions in small communities in Oregon?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And give us your take on whether these kinds of things are ultimately allowed? Are they ultimately allowed or are they ultimately turned down?
Well, it depends on what's being proposed.
Something like this?
Yeah, I would say that if, I believe there's enough issues raised with this application or this decision, if it's made, that if an appeal were filed, in my considered opinion, there's, I believe there's a good chance the Land Use Board of Appeals would remand to the decision for additional findings necessary to justify it. Obviously, that's an educated guess on my part, and I don't claim any, you know, great knowledge that would, you know, clairvoyance on that subject, but that's, I believe there's a certain significant chance that would happen. That has happened for other small cities in Oregon that have had urban growth boundary amendments appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals.
Is there anything else you'd like to add that might help the board in making a decision eventually on this matter?
No, I don't think I have anything else to add at this point.
Commissioner Lykan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Howard, thanks for being here today, and appreciate it. I have one question for you, and that would be, so based on your experience in working with other communities that are smaller communities, have you worked with communities that are, say the population is certain, is a certain amount, but traditionally have employed more people in their community than what the community's population actually is?
I can't say any other community similar to Coburg in that way comes to mind, but it's certainly a reasonable situation that would occur for a city to have a small population and a much larger employment base. And I believe that Coburg's study of its, you know, of its need for employment was based upon some regional considerations. So, and the department did not have an objection to that particular part of Coburg's work.
Very good, thank you. That's the only question I had for you. I'd like to look now to staff, and so we have a recommendation by our planning commission to move forward, so...
Remember, we're still in the hearing.
Pardon?
Remember, we're still in the hearing portion.
Yes.
Do you have questions for the folks that testified? I think we'll get back to...
Oh, we'll get back to staff. Oh, you're right. I apologize. You haven't closed the public hearing, so, thank you for reminding me of that. So I'm going to, I'll come back to you at staff later on that, and maybe question then from Milo. Thank you for the reminder. I didn't hear the, I should have heard the gavel, but I didn't. Obviously, I didn't hear the gavel go down. So Milo, the, based on the testimony that you heard, and it was, so I was somewhat confused. The letter that was presented to you is June of 2014. That was the date. So have you have since worked to, in a sense, correct? Or at least worked on those findings that was actually presented to you by the letter since then? And has that information been presented back to DLCD? If you could just comment on that.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Lykan, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lykan. The answer to both of your questions is yes. After the letter was written by DLCD, the city took the issue back from the Lane County Planning Commission and doubled the amount of findings, went through an additional analysis, and bolstered the findings in response, in part, to DLCD's concerns. Notice and those proposed findings were sent to DLCD before the Coburg City Council held a hearing. No DLCD comments were received at that time. No additional response from DLCD has been entered into. So I think Coburg's assumed that we had addressed DLCD's concerns and they were off, they were no longer a valid concern. And when we get to rebuttal, I'll talk a little bit more about that, but I think that answers your question.
It does, and I appreciate that, but I must say that that's, I think that's a pretty important part of this, this process. And if DLCD's suggesting they've not seen those, the information that you provided back to them, you know, we've, obviously, this is, I'm looking at this from a pretty quasi-judicial point of view, and so I think that we, it would be important that that information is available. I will also say that, based on the letter from Mia, she makes pretty compelling arguments from the 1,000 Friends perspective, and so I think we need to make sure that if Lane County moves forward in co-adopting, information's going to be very, very key on being able to move forward on that. So whether that's a breakdown in communication between Coburg and DLCD, I don't know, but I think that would be pretty important to make sure that that information is clarified moving forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Lykan, and again, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lykan. This kind of merges into the rebuttal discussion that I was going to have, but there, I find the comments that were made in opposition to be confusing with the facts in this case. With regard to Mr. Kirsten's discussion about his objections to being excluded now, I don't understand the rationale. He was opposed to the idea of including any of Stallings Lane, but now because a portion of Stallings Lane is going to be included, he wants to include all of it. I don't, I don't understand that. The transportation concerns that he raised are difficult for me to understand. It's going to remain a county road, Stallings Lane is going to remain a county road. There should be adequate transportation, and the addition of any residential development at the south end of Stallings Lane would necessarily need to accommodate site views and access distances so that the road can continue to be used for agricultural purposes and all other kinds of purposes on the county road. So I understand and accept that Mr. Kirsten is a representative of the neighborhood who does want to be included, and I said that it was the city's experience that most of the people expressed opposition to the area being included. And so there's, there's an exception there, but his reasons I don't understand. With regard to 1,000 Friends and DLCD, their involvement has, as I mentioned in my previous remarks, DLCD has been involved in the process all along, has been advising the city all along, has been participating with the city, and the city thought that it had met all of DLCD's concerns, because these concerns were never expressed during the process. Then at the end of the process, we had the letter in June, which raised issues. The city took the matter back, analyzed that letter amongst other things and the concerns of 1,000 Friends, and moved forward with the new findings, expanded findings, to deal with those issues and others. There was one additional meeting with DLCD and 1,000 Friends at their request. City staff and members of the city council, not a majority, but members of the city council met with the 1,000 Friends representative and a DLCD representative. Until that point, 1,000 Friends' concerns had all been, and DLCD's concerns, had all been about the residential expansion and the inclusion of agricultural land in that residential expansion. At that meeting, it was something of a surprise when 1,000 Friends said that although they were opposed to the residential expansion, their real concern was the industrial expansion, and they were perfectly willing, if the city would drop the idea of the employment growth expansion on the east side of I-5, they would give the city a pass on the residential discussion. DLCD representative was there, DLCD representative was nodding as 1,000 Friends was talking, DLCD representative said nothing about the process. The city determined that it didn't have the statutory opportunity to throw its employment needs analysis and the direction that DLCD had previously agreed the city needed to go through, to throw that out in the hopes of buying off 1,000 Friends. So the city went ahead with its findings and went through the process that brings us here. But it's confusing now to hear 1,000 Friends and DLCD raise questions that they had opportunity to raise before, the city dealt with them. 1,000 Friends at least indicated that they were close enough to being satisfied, that they were willing to give up on the accusations about residential properties. And now, I mean, the city didn't agree with that, so I guess it's understandable that they're here now. But I think it's important for you to recognize that the city has responded and dealt with DLCD. I think particularly the question that was raised tonight, this afternoon, about the industrial land and why the city is bringing in 100 acres. Again, the analysis showed that there was a regional need for parcels that were larger than 20 acres in size under single ownership that could be developed. The city's analysis found that it could meet some of that need. But as Mr. Stotter said, it's not 20 acres. It's more than 20 acres, and it's more than 20 acres of developable land. The land that the city's bringing in has constraints on it. It's wetlands, it's hybrid soils, there's going to be infrastructure, including a frontage road. So it may be 100 acres to start with, but it's not going to end up with 100 acres. Plus, the city has a lot of experience dealing with divided parcels. The agricultural land that the city is bringing in now is already partly inside the city, and it's been an ongoing problem with that land because part of it's inside the city, part of it's outside the city. And that, that's a constraint on the agricultural use, it's a constraint on the parts inside the city. So that's a, that's a reason to bring in the entire parcel for employment purposes. Plus, the owner of the property, who I think is the, is kind of the final arbiter on the agricultural value of the property, said that agriculturally, if you split the parcel in part and take in the northern half, however you, however much you need to meet your needs, and the city, original analysis was about 65 acres, that southern parcel is, is not going to support agricultural use because it's poor land, it's really only used for grazing and raising hay and those kinds of things. So it's not going to be sustainable as agricultural land. So there's no reason to leave it outside to protect agricultural land. So the city brought in the entire parcel. Couple of other things, and then I'll conclude. The, this prospect of bringing in the Stallings Lane issue is tied to the interconnector that is part of the TSP that we'll talk about when we get to that. One of the things that helps justify in the city's mind, it's not, it's not a statutory criteria, but it helps justify it is, is that the city does desperately need to have that connector that runs between Coburg Road North and Industrial Way to relieve the pressure on the intersections in the city. The, that was in the prior TSP, it's in this TSP, but to develop that outside the urban growth area is, is going to be problematic, it's going to be difficult, it's also going to be expensive. But if that property is brought inside the urban growth boundary, then the northern boundary of that is exactly where the connector road would go, and as part of the development of that property, you could, you could develop that. So the UGB expansion helps with the transportation problems in that way as well. And also, I failed to mention, and it was pointed out to me by the city administrator, one of the big issues about increased traffic in the area of the intersection of Coburg Road North and Van Dyne is that that's where the Coburg Fire Station is. Currently, the Coburg Fire Station gets access onto Van Dyne as it becomes Coburg Road. If we increase traffic, as that intersection fails, it's going to be harder and harder for there to be emergency access from that area. We put a lot of people out in Stallings Lane, and they're all driving in, and one of them has an accident in front of the fire station, and then somebody in town needs, needs help, the fire station won't be accessible because of the problem. So emergency access is another factor that goes in here that helps justify the decisions that the city made. I think Commissioner Sorenson had a question.
I do have a question for you, and then later...
We're still on questions, not rebuttal right now.
Yeah, we're still on the questions.
Sounds like we've got a little rebuttal mixed in. Rather lengthy.
Okay, so I'll just ask my question, questions. One is, I'm hearing that the city is arguing that the need will be more than the 20.79 acres that was shown in the 2010 urbanization study. More than the 20.79 acres of industrial land.
Well, the, in order to, as, in order to meet the 10%, we need a couple of those parcels. So yes, the need is there, and again...
Well, the need is for 20.79 acres of industrial land, and that two 20-acre parcels would give you more than 20.79 acres.
Right.
Why do you need 100?
The, the, the city does not need 100 acres, okay? But the city established a need for a portion of that property. And when you, what the city established a need was for more than 20 acres of developable land. So if, if just 20 acres of that property were carved off, that wouldn't be adequate to meet the needs, because you have to put a frontage road in there, you have to put...
Okay, well, that's my second question, which is that your idea apparently is that the acreage is not for the acreage of industrial land and infrastructure land. It's only for the industrial land. So then, the infrastructure land, such as roads, utility corridors, schools, government, land that is not industrial land, because a road is not industrial land. Your view apparently is that that's all in addition to the industrial land need. And I'm just really taken by that idea that in an urban growth boundary dispute or discussion can say, well, we want to have X amount of land added, but that doesn't include land for roads or utility corridors. The whole purpose of it is to confine the growth within established urban growth boundaries for all of those needs. So can you explain your view that the land, the 20.79 acres of industrial land, has got to be bigger, because apparently your view is that, well, to service that land, you need additional land?
Well, Commissioner Sorenson, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure that, that I would agree with all of your analysis leading up to the question, but basically, there's... of your analysis leading up to the question, but basically, whenever you look at development, you have to take into account infrastructure needs as part of the development, okay? The analysis here was for campus industrial, light industrial kind of developments, where the record shows that developers need a contiguous parcel that they can develop for one kind of use. And such things as internal roads and so forth are sometimes included in the analysis, sometimes not. Here, given the nature of the campus industrial, it was felt that it was better to get more than to simply, if you allow 21 acres, in order to accommodate that infrastructure. Plus, there are some special circumstances with this property that argue for more than the internal infrastructure. One is that the industrial area management plan calls for a frontage road that would run along the parcel that's being included. So, that's not what you would call internal infrastructure, that's losing, I don't know, five to 10 acres of the property for a frontage road. Now, it'll help if that's brought inside the urban growth boundary, and we'll again have that discussion with regard to the TSP. But it's, so we have then, now we're talking about 35 acres or so, because we've got to deal with a frontage road, plus the parcel that we need to bring in. And then, what you're doing again is you're bringing in the northern part of the parcel, you're dividing the parcel up, and right now, from what we understand from the owner of the property, it's marginal farmland at the present time. It is economically viable as a 100-acre parcel, but once you start cutting off portions of that, especially the portions that have access now to Van Dyne Road, it becomes less and less economically viable. So, what you would end up with if you took a portion of the property is you'd end up with an industrial portion of the property, and then essentially wasteland that is not going to be used for natural resource use, it's not economically sustainable as anything. So, why not meet the property owner's request and include all of that land so that we have not only the infrastructure needs, but then we can accommodate the possibility that it may be that the developer that comes in wants a 50-acre parcel instead of, I mean, the minimum was more than 20 acres, but as Mr. Stotter said, we don't know that it won't be larger than that. So, there's a number of reasons why the decision was made to include the entire parcel.
Any other questions?
So, one last, real quickly. Milo, is Coburg part of the MPO?
Yes, it is part of the MPO now, yes.
Part of the MPO, so that's, last I checked, MPO is kind of regional, is that correct?
Yes, it is, yes. Thank you.
Mr. Thorson.
I had a question for Ms. Nelson.
I'll offer the city again a chance for rebuttal. And then I'm going to probably ask if there's questions that either, if we need further information, we may need to consider continuing the hearing, but...
Ms. Nelson, I see on page seven that one of your arguments against this is that the city put out a 2010 urbanization study, and according to your letter, according to Table 6.7, Coburg has a maximum total need of only 20.79 acres of industrial land and an existing supply of 28.4 acres. And then, you go on to explain that 40 is greater than 20.79, and 100 is greater than that. I'd like to hear you describe this in your own words, rather than me summarizing it, and describe why you think that the city's analysis does not support the expansion.
So, there's like three layers to this, and I can understand why you're confused. The 2010 study was a jobs-based forecast, and I did cite a case, the Donald case, in the letter there, you could look that up, but that, the court held that employment need has to be, land need has to be based on a jobs forecast, and Coburg did that, it made a reasonable forecast that it would recapture all 2,200 of its old jobs that it had lost in the recession, plus another 615, and the 615 would need new sites. And then they computed how much of that would be industrial, and how many acres, based on reasonable numbers, jobs per acre, they came up with this 20-point, whatever it was, 79 acres total. That's the total need for all industrial jobs that need new land on all sizes of site. And there's nothing wrong with that analysis, okay? The problem is, so they took that, and they have that, because they have 28 acres of industrial land, they have that, that's not a problem. But then they said, beyond that, we think we have more opportunities, that we could capture more opportunities beyond what's in our jobs forecast, and that has been tried too by Woodburn, is a good case to look up on that. There, Woodburn said, "We've got our 20-year supply, but then we've got more that we want to have for opportunities." So, this is not a new idea, but it doesn't work, those get remanded because the premise of Goal 14 is you have a 20-year supply, you're meeting a 20-year need for jobs and population. Now, Coburg could have said, "We think we're actually going to get more than 615 jobs, we think we're going to have this huge influx of jobs from, you know, we're going to grow faster than ever because we've got all these opportunities." The right way to do it is you make the forecast larger, you know, based on evidence, and then you forecast from that. They didn't do that, they forecasted a jobs forecast, set a land need that they already have in the UGB, and then they slotted in more on top of that, not with any evidence, just said, "We think we want this." And here's where I think I disagree, DLCD and we disagree, and I don't know if it's because they don't understand the proposal, or that we just don't agree, they told you that they think that extra one to two-acre, 20-acre parcels on top of the jobs forecast, that they support that, but I'm not sure they understand that that's actually not based on the jobs forecast, you'd have to ask them that. But then there's, on top of all of that, there's this regional thing that the landowner did, that goes beyond the one to two 20-acre parcels, you see what I'm saying? That wasn't even adopted by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Milo, do you just do a quick rebuttal on that, and I think we need to decide whether we want to continue the hearing or not.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a rebuttal or response to the most recent comments from Thousand Friends. I think it's important to notice the deviation between DLCD and Thousand Friends on this. DLCD testified that they didn't have any problems with the jobs analysis and the conclusions that the city reached, but they had some concerns about the excess acreage, and I think that I've addressed those questions. What Coburg did is partially reflected in Thousand Friends' comments, but there's some omissions. Coburg did do the basic analysis and determined that it did not need additional land for its own internal economic jobs growth. But as I mentioned before, there's now a new mandate for cities to look at regional needs and to analyze whether or not the city can validly participate in meeting that regional need. Coburg has a history of being a regional employer. At one time, the largest employer in Lane County was in Coburg, and unfortunately, that large employer went away, but since then, Coburg has built itself back up, adding thousands of additional jobs. So, Coburg has a history of being a regional employer. It did the analysis that DLCD approved of and supported and helped with to determine that it could meet a regional economic need. There's findings in the analysis, there's facts in the urbanization study and elsewhere to support that analysis, and Coburg came to the conclusion that it had an obligation under the law to address some of the regional need, it chose 10% approximately, and moved forward with that. So, we think that the question is, the answer is pretty clear, Coburg did the analysis. If it wasn't for just the automatic objection anytime that agricultural land is included, we wouldn't be debating this. So, I think that unless you have further questions, I would, I'll stop there with one final comment in terms of keeping the record open. I think commissioners, that the record is adequate to support the city's decision, to support the planning commission decision. So, I would encourage the city of Coburg, would encourage you to move forward with your decision. I don't think that a delay is going to serve any purpose. Each time that we've reexamined it, then Thousand Friends comes forward with a whole new set of objections, it could go on forever, but basically, the objections have been addressed, and I think the record is adequate. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I just want to be clear that we did get submission of information from Land Watch and Thousand Friends in the last 24 hours, you don't desire the record to be held open for any rebuttal of that information?
No, I had, thanks to the prompt action of staff, I had an opportunity to review the submissions by Thousand Friends and by Land Watch, and I think I have, the city's addressed those in the record today, so I think we're okay.
Okay, just want to be clear about that, thank you.
Right, I understand.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thorson.
Before we close the record, I guess I'd like to ask staff a question, and maybe Mr. Voorhees, I'm not sure, or Lindsey. So, we heard about the employment numbers and the regional, and a discussion about regional, and it was presented, I think, by Mr. Terrell, that the board, what was being requested, I think somewhere between 8% to 10% of the regional available employment numbers. So, can you explain that just a little bit more to me about, is that outside of when cities do their industrial lands' needs, and they determine that they need this for their city, is this regional a component that's in excess of that?
I'll let Kent kind of back me up, but in general terms, I think the short answer is yes, but it's sort of a developing area as well, because there's some case law involved in some of that analysis and how it plays into things, but there is that opportunity for, and actually an obligation for the cities to look at more than just what their internal needs are, and if they can identify and provide evidence and justification that establishes some level of need for potential regional jobs and employment, then I think there's at least a basis to conclude that the change is justified. Whether it is on the evidence and whether the findings are adequate is all subject to the review if it goes up on appeals.
So, if I might kind of follow this conversation a little bit further?
I would only add to that, that it's policy beyond what Mr. Voorhees just explained, it's up to you, as the Board of Commissioners for Lane County, to kind of divvy up that pie, as was explained earlier, the rule doesn't specify the direction on how you do that, it's policy for you.
So, just to go a little further, we got two cities, Springfield and Eugene, going through the same process, both of them, I believe, are discussing industrial lands. Maybe I haven't paid close enough attention because it hasn't came to us yet, are they including some regional components in their industrial land needs?
You know, I'm involved with Springfield, not with Eugene, to date, and I don't recall that Springfield isn't, they have discussed it, but I'm not sure specifically how they're dealing with it, and if they've completed their analysis of that, but they are aware of it.
So, kind of where I'm going here is, or my thought process is, also, it's been presented that there's been, the landowner has had a regional employment number component added in here, but it has, does it technically need to be adopted by the city to have standing? If we were to say, "Well, we support the regional component"?
In terms of standing, a city will have standing to play in any kind of a review and appeal of this, but the...
Validity or strength to...
We consider it as part of our decision.
At some level, it's sort of who goes first, who's on first, and it certainly is an option for a city to come to you and say, "We have this regional, we think you ought to include it in your action on our urban growth boundary." And the tension you may find is, over the course of years and years and years, depending on how detailed and extensive you want to do some kind of survey or inventory of what kind of regional need do we have, or how you determine that, could lead you to a position where another city comes to you after several other cities have come and added regional to their needs, you may have overgrown or have allowed more than what is reasonable. But I think on a case-by-case basis, each city has the opportunity to, if they choose, to look at that regional employment need and say, "We think an additional acreage of such and such may meet that need, will you approve it?" And then, as Kent said, it's ultimately up to the board to kind of figure out how that fits into all of the pictures within the counties.
So, is that a separate process from what we're dealing with today?
No, I think you have to kind of use it, if it's part of the decision, you need to articulate and include rationale that speaks to how you view that proportion of the additional land that is included in the urban growth boundary that you adopt. So, you sort of need to address that as part of each individual action. There is an opportunity of a long-range planning program that looks and starts looking at that on a county-wide basis, but as Kent said, the rule is so new, and it is not very clear that, I think, at this stage in the development of that concept, it's a case-by-case situation that the board's going to face on individual urban growth boundary proposals that come to it, that the board needs to adopt in order to include those in a city's urban growth boundary.
So, you know, I don't know if we have enough time today with this and the other two items to kind of work this through the process, but I guess ultimately, as is this hypothetical, it's not hypothetical, when I first became a commissioner, Coburg was, they employed in excess of 3,000 people out in their industrial area. Today, I think we're just a couple thousand people, but historically, they have been a regional employer for this area. So, I don't think it's out of the question to continue to believe with history and facts that they're going to continue to be a regional employer and can build on that regional employment piece. So, and my question, and what I'm really concerned about here is, I want to make sure that as we move forward, if the board decides to move forward with this, that the decision is within the law and that it can be defended to move forward, and so, question is, is let's just say that we take, and say that in the study, we believe that Coburg realistically could be 15% of the regional employment, so therefore, we can find justification to say that we think 80 acres of the 100, or whatever the number is, can be, you know, regional employment, future employment for the area, and, you know, hearing what Mr. Mechem's concerns are, that you figure in infrastructure, and that you, you know, take the 100, and maybe you've got 80 buildable acres, wow, it seems to me like we could justify that decision. Is that something that you could say today, "Yeah, we need that," or does it need to go back and be reviewed and make a recommendation back to the board if that's where we're headed, if there's more colleagues that want more assurance on that process?
I think my answer to you today is, I'm not as comfortable as I might want to be in order to say that, yes, that's reasonable, I have to review the findings and... in order to say that, yes, that's reasonable, I have to review the findings in a little more detail with that issue in mind that I have to date. So my recommendation would be, give us some more time to look at it and get our heads together and kind of confirm that, yes, they have findings that adequately address. There is some discussion of that in the employment, in the study that was done that articulates. And so, part of my analysis would be to see how well that is reflected or articulated or connected to the findings. Because as you know, sometimes when you get to the Landy's Board of Appeals, it's what you say in the findings that counts. If there's evidence to support what you say and what you say is accurate in terms of your rationale and justifiable under the law, then you're fine. But if it's not, what you say in the findings, you may end up with a remand to further articulate findings and support.
Just one technical question here is, so if we close the record today and you go through and do the review, and you want to, and we need to beef up the findings, we'd have to reopen the record?
I'd recommend that if you want that kind of a review, you might leave the record open so that, again, if the city has second thoughts and they want to submit some more pointers or revised findings, they have that opportunity to do so.
Thanks. I will note that I've already been, had a request to hold the record open for seven days, so that's an automatic, more or less, so.
Technically not automatic, because this is the second public hearing on this, under the statute, assuming the statute applied to this. The first one was the Planning Commission and there it's automatic.
Okay.
You certainly have that opportunity though as well.
Thanks for the clarification.
Chair.
Did I see Commissioner Farr?
Before we get too far away from our previous discussion.
Commissioner Stewart had a question on if the economic needs analysis would need to go back and be adopted by the city. Did you have that question? It actually was, it was a part of the ordinance, it was a part of the updated Coburg Urbanization Study, Exhibit D to their ordinance that they adopted in July. So I just wanted to pick it up.
Thank you, I was just going by the testimony.
It's in there. It's hard to find, but it's in there.
Commissioner Stewart.
I don't know if staff can do this, or counsel, or...
Three times before me, that's fine. I'm sorry.
I'll be happy to wait.
No, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regard to these cases that were just cited by Ms. Nelson, I think she talked about the Woodburn and City of Donald case. Is there any way you could give us your summary of those and email us and make that a part of the record? How difficult is that?
Two of the cases.
Who was suing who and what was decided?
Do that if the record's left open.
Yeah, I think I'd be uncomfortable, uncomfortable trying to do that today orally, but yeah, if we wanted, if you wanted us to discuss particular cases, we certainly could do that.
Yeah, well, they were cited by, you know, one of the people testifying and said, you know, take a look at this. And then in their materials, they're providing us the Oregon Ministry of Rule, which we can read, but they're also saying that there's those two cases and maybe comparable, I don't know, but maybe comparable to this, where there's discussions of regional, you know, economic impact of a, you know, big shopping center and whatever the issues were and going out on ag land and, you know, comparable issues to this case.
Right. But I also do assume, like without talking to particularly, that Mr. Meacham has in his analysis and review of the articulations of those issues and the cases, they've done that kind of research and looked at it and analyzed it and reached the conclusion he spoke to you of. But to the extent the board wants some more work on that, we certainly can, because there are decisions here locally that had some regional aspects to them that were addressed in litigation. And that's part of the case law and analysis that I'd want to do in a little more detail before I say, yes, that there is justification for what is...
I'm really not asking to compare that to anything. I just want to know more about those cases. Because if it's being represented to us by the department and, you know, one of the public interest groups that has a history of commenting on these matters and occasionally appealing these matters, it'd be nice if we were informed about it.
And the citations are included, so there certainly is an opportunity to go look at them yourself.
Yeah, the Donald one is, the Woodburn one. She mentioned the Woodburn one.
Right, right.
Commissioner Farr? I apologize for forgetting I had you in the queue.
I was going to speak in response to Commissioner Stewart, but that's passed now, so.
Commissioner Lichen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just curious, didn't we have a big hospital that went to the State Court of Appeals that kind of codified a lot of this, that what we're talking about today? Now, granted, it wasn't a UGB expansion, but that property was within UGB and eventually annexed in. So that all went all the way to the Court of Appeals. And now, granted, it's been a decade, so I don't have all of it memorized, but I think that codified a huge amount of what's being discussed, I think, part of Commissioner Stewart's question. Am I correct on that?
It certainly will provide some guidance and analysis of how the court viewed the regional aspect of that development or that action, which was actually refinement plan changes and metro plan changes to accommodate that. But it also, as you pointed out, was not an expansion and not analyzed under the GO4 rules, GO14 rules and law that relates to an expansion of an urban growth boundary. So there's that little nuance to it that it may inform and help in some of the analysis, but it won't speak directly to the question.
But it did clarify a city's decision-making from a regional perspective.
Correct.
Thank you.
So I haven't had much of a chance to talk here today, so I'm going to hit a couple things. One, I'm really uncomfortable with what I'm presented for, for a decision today. I know the city thinks they presented everything they need, but I'm hearing things that are incongruous with each other relative to the industrial Area 8 and the North Stallings Road area, where the reasons for not including one are circumvented for including the other. And it seems to be in tension with each other quite a bit. And then why the including of the EFU residential on Class II soils, which, you know, yeah, they're not Class I, but they're Class II soils, which we don't have a whole lot of in this valley, versus four to six, which the industrial lands on. I see nothing in ORS 197, 298 that speaks to what the soils are underlying exception lands, as to why they should be brought in first. Whether they're Class I or Class II makes no difference. You're still supposed to consider them first. And it doesn't talk about the owner's desires to be in or out of the urban growth boundary. You know, that's not part of the decision process. What I didn't hear in all this discussion about some of the transportation issues relative to North Stallings Road was an analysis of what it would take to make those intersections serviceable. Yeah, they might fail with that additional traffic, but there's engineering solutions to service levels. And I haven't heard that they are unreasonable or not within practicality to expand, you know, how those intersections are controlled, whether they're widened, whether there's changes in traffic movements out there. I haven't heard any of that evidence and seen any of that evidence in the record. I saw a signal warrant that was submitted by branch engineering, but there wasn't a stop sign warrant, you know, because there is a flow-through that they left in there. Nor was there any discussion of adding turning lanes and various other solutions that could be presented. I didn't see a thorough analysis of why you're excluding North Stallings. So, you know, if I close the record right now, I can't support adding the EFU land and not adding Stallings. You know, it's, to me, it's very difficult to do that. Which, you know, so if I approve this, I feel like we're just setting it up to be remanned. You know, it'll be a fairly simple remand. On the other side, I really understand the argument about regional land. We just went through a whole GO14 exemption to add regionally significant industrial land. And part of that was proving out that we had some feasibility of servicing it with sewer systems. And also, I understand, you know, that we cross over I-5, there's some significant cost in doing so. But then you're dealing with Class IV to Class VI soils, and it's a little bit more justifiable. But the question is, is if you can go over there for Class IV, Class VI soils for industrial, why can't you do that also and put some of the residential needs over there? You know, I haven't seen a discussion of why the residential's not going on that side of I-5. Once you've kind of crossed that Rubicon, why isn't it also for the residential? So, you know, I already have one request to hold the record open. And I really do think there needs to be some, it sounds like there's a lot of questions for staff about how we're allowed to do this regional allocation of industrial needs and how that applies to us. You know, it sounds like a reasonable thing to do, you know, one of the Coburg's great advantages, it's I-5 access, and that's why it's been a regional employer. But I want to make sure that we have decent findings that support that. But I also have some real issues on the residential part of this. And I haven't seen enough evidence presented in a way that I could support the findings personally to do what Coburg's presenting right now with residential lands. So I'm in a tough place. I'm, you know, probably more than willing at this point to hold the record open, and I think seven days may not be enough, and then have a fourth reading on this, and maybe even a continued public hearing, rather than close the public hearing at this point. But I'll turn the rest of my board members to discuss, you know, the record and closing the hearing at this point is the question. Do we want to extend the record? Do we want to close the hearing? Or do we want to continue the hearing? Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. I'd be in favor of extending, keeping the hearing open. A couple of questions that I have that haven't been answered, nor am I going to ask to have them answered, is the coordination with the regional urban growth boundary expansion needs that are being considered by the City of Eugene. Now, Mia and I sat in the CRG, I don't know, 15, 25 years ago now, something like, it was seven years ago, I think, that we started with Envision Eugene. And following down the path of Envision Eugene, it's difficult for me to really look at considering whether Coburg needs 10% of the regional, the regional pie, I guess we're calling it, or if Coburg needs more based upon the fact that I really, I'm not really positive, even after all these years of Envision Eugene, what Eugene is wanting or what Eugene is going to come up with. And really, looking at it more in a regional context. You know, if you look at a map, which I'm looking at maps right now, it makes sense that Coburg would have more than 10% of the regional needs because of the, because of the access that's available there and because of the history in Coburg. So I need to have more questions answered. What is Eugene considering as far as regional opportunity is concerned? And, you know, the fact that we're not just looking at internal job needs, but the potential for opportunity. And I'm not, Commissioner Storson, thinking about a regional shopping center, but other, you know, potentially manufacturing that could be taking place, opportunities that we may have down the road to use a 100-acre parcel that looks like it might be a 20-acre parcel right now in Coburg. You know, so the opportunity seems, it seems to me that it's great and the City of Eugene isn't taking advantage of all the years of work that so many people have put into Envision Eugene. So I actually have some concrete plans as to how they're going to use the area immediately surrounding the urban growth boundary. Then maybe Coburg has a greater opportunity to provide work for the people in the Upper Willamette Valley. So I'd like to hear more coordination. What is the City of Eugene planning? Where are they in Envision Eugene right now? And, you know, what are their plans for industrial land outside the existing urban growth boundary? And is, how much of that is just to absorb what their fleeting, ever-changing projection for population inside the City of Eugene for, in 2030? So, you know, there are a number of unanswered questions there. Commissioner Bozovic suggests maybe seven days isn't enough, maybe seven days isn't enough to get that information. But if we're going to be making what is a very long-lasting decision, and a decision that's going to make a lot of the future, future land use, it's going to predicate future land use, then we need to take a look at it more on a regional basis. So that's, my questions have not been answered in that area. And Mr. Meacham, I think you provided a great testimony today. And you had, and you say that Coburg's ready to go ahead and close the hearing today. I'm a little bit, I disagree with you a little bit. I think we have a little bit more that we need to see before I'm ready to move forward. So thank you.
So, just for the board's knowledge, I know our December 1st meeting is already packed. I've, you know, been on the agenda setting, so I would be looking possibly if we're going to continue this hearing, to look at maybe a 1:30 time certain on December 2nd. We have a tour of the mission in the morning. So I think, you know, if somebody's considering a motion to continue the hearing and hold the record open, that would probably be the best date. Does that, I want to look at some of my staff, key staff and some other folks to see if December 2nd at 1:30 works for them.
I'd almost rather look to push it out to the 8th, just if we're asking to get additional information into the record and then we have to get our packets in the pipeline three Mondays before the meeting and there's a holiday next week and...
I'm not, I don't remember a lot on the 8th, though.
Yeah, 8th or 15th are both available dates, but I don't know what's currently on the future agendas.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I think you're on.
We're doing the strategic plan update and annual work session. It'll be a quarterly update on our financial report, quarterly update on our strategic plan, and then a work session, annual update on the strategic plan. That's the only thing that comes to mind immediately for the 8th.
Okay, so it's a fairly open date at this time, as they fill up fast, but at this time. So I'll look to...
Commissioner Stewart? Just a comment, as staff works on the, you know, the items that have been talked, I want to share Commissioner Bozovic's. It would be nice just to tighten up the reasonings for why Stallings isn't entirely included in the exception areas. I think it makes sense when we're talking about the medium to high-density residential, that that's probably not going to be very good, you know, program that for Stallings. So it would be nice if that could be reviewed and just make sure that, you know, we're really, really comfortable with the findings and try to meet the concerns of some of the commissioners with that. So with that, I would like to move the second reading and send you a third reading and public hearing for ordinance number PA 1315 in the matter of co-adopting the amendments to the Coburg Comprehensive Plan, including adopting the Coburg Urbanization Study update, expanding the urban growth boundary for industrial and residential land needs. You designate land from rural, residential, and agricultural to traditional, medium, and high-density residential, light, industrial, and mixed-use plan designations, adopting corresponding amendments to the official lane, County Rural Comprehensive Plan, setting the third meeting and public hearing for December the 8th at 1:30 PM at Harris Hall.
It's holding the record open.
Includes holding the record open, I assume that's...
Second.
Then moved and seconded, discussion to the motion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So we'll be coming back on December 8th with this item.
So, that raises a secondary question. Do we move on to the next item or do we hold, do we do a quick reading and move that one also to the 8th?
I would recommend you do read it and you do open the hearing, listen to limited testimony if you want to, and continue it in the same fashion. They're not indelibly linked... They're not indelibly linked, but there certainly is a synchronicity to the two.
Yeah, it's kind of like, you have to, a transportation plan should accommodate your 20-year growth rate, so kind of hard to do one without the other. So then I will move on to item 12B, which is the second reading and public hearing in the matter of co-adopting the Coburg Transportation System Plan for application within the urbanizable area outside of the city of Coburg limits, but within the city, sorry, of Coburg urban growth boundary, and adopting savings and servability clauses. And we have Lydia McKenney, our transportation, she's no longer, are you still the transportation?
Today I am.
Today you're still the transportation planning program supervisor, for the moment.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good afternoon, Commissioners. So we have a transportation system.
Ant that mic over in front of you.
So we have a transportation system plan co-adoption before you. As Mr. Voorhees has indicated, they are related, certainly land use and transportation are linked. There has been some discussion about whether or not the board could choose to move the transportation system plan forward outside of moving the UGB forward. And I can talk about that a little bit more after the public hearing. I think one can make findings, and I think the City of Coburg would argue that you can move those forward. You could move the TSP forward without the UGB if you choose to do so, and I think I have a path that we could talk about if you're interested in doing that. It may make more sense, and again, I think this is really a board decision to keep those two linked, and so perhaps we should open the public hearing and hear the testimony, and then we can talk about those options after that. I will say generally, when we come forward to you with co-adoption of transportation system plans, the ones that we've done recently, we've done Springfield most recently and Florence a few years ago, they weren't so tied to the UGB study, so they're in and of themselves, they have tended not to be particularly controversial. You know, Layton County's role is, we support the cities in creating their own vision for their transportation system plans. We do the same thing in terms of the City of Coburg, we have been involved in that process. And there's nothing that we have through the TSP update have said there's any conflicts with Layton County policies. But again, there is this question about a road that would be outside of the UGB if the UGB expansion is not approved. And again, we can talk about those details, I'd recommend, after the public hearing.
Thank you.
So any questions for staff before I open the public hearing? So I'll open the public hearing on ordinance PA 1314, and the only person I had signed up for that was Gordon Howard. But I think we'll, oh, that's, let's hear from the city first, I'm sorry. Getting out of order with myself.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Didn't want to forget.
Yeah.
This is an application by the City of Coburg for approval of an updated transportation system plan. For the record, my name is Milo Meacham, I'm the city attorney for the City of Coburg. I'm here representing the city, the applicant. There's been a lot of discussion about whether this is tied or has to be tied to the UGB. And it is the city's position that it, while there is a relationship, they don't need to be tied together, and I think it would be appropriate for the commissioners, appropriate for the City of Coburg, you can move forward with this and get it off your plate, and then if you've got questions about the UGB, we can address those. But this one is, not without controversy, I'll admit, but it's capable of being processed on its own, and that's what we would request. To talk about it in general, this is an update of the transportation system plan. It's not a new plan. As Commissioner Farr noted before, Coburg is part of the MPO, and so this is part of updating the regional transportation system plan, which is underway now, and the elements that are happening, each city updates its transportation system plan, and then you take all those TSPs and you merge them together and you get the regional plan. So this is a part of that process. It's an incremental advancement of that process. For Coburg, it's, there's not a lot new in this transportation system plan that has not been before the commission before, that has not been a part of Coburg's long-term planning process. The two particular issues that have been raised as being most closely linked with the urban growth boundary analysis, and therefore might serve as a reason to extend it, are the, what we call the east-west collector, which I mentioned before, would run across the agricultural land and connect Coburg Road North with Industrial Way. And then the other issue is the frontage road on the east side in order to deal with the site view problems and the intersection problems there, and then also to accommodate future growth on that side. There is a relationship between these and the UGB. Certainly, if the UGB expansion is approved, it makes these easier, makes them more feasible. You don't need to go through the exceptions process and that kind of thing. But there's, it's not an inextricable link, so that we can move forward with the TSP independent of the UGB analysis. And that's because the TSP analysis does stand on its own, there's rules that allow exactly what's happening here. And they also provide, for example, if the TSP is out of sync with the urban growth boundary analysis, the rules provide that those portions that are out of sync are nullified automatically and don't become effective until the UGB process is straightened up. So you don't have to worry about inconsistencies because the rules provide for a way to deal with those inconsistencies. But basically, there's not a need to tie them together. One of the questions that's been raised, probably the chief question that's been raised is, is that the argument that the TSP is a land use decision and is essentially deferring the question of the building streets, roads on rural lands that will serve urban areas. And without the UGB at first blush, that's the way the process looks. But as a matter of fact, the transportation rules adopted by the LCD provide for exactly this kind of a situation. They provide that specifically, while the TSP is a land use decision, it's also a policy decision, so certain elements of your TSP do not have a binding effect. If the City of Coburg was adopting a capital improvement plan and saying, we're going to put a collector exactly here, we're going to put a frontage road exactly here, that would be a land use decision, and the city would have to go through the exceptions process or another analysis to justify that. But here, the TSP is not going through that, it's just saying that we're looking at all the alternatives, we're looking at questions about the viability of the intersections, and there is in the TSP an analysis of different options on the intersections and looking at alternatives. And the TSP does its analysis and says, well, if we do nothing, this is the problem. If we do other kinds of things, why, it leads to some improvement. And that's where the collector comes in, especially in terms of the intersections of Pearl and Willamette and Van Dyne and Coburg Road North. Those intersections have been analyzed, the best option is the collector option to deal with the problems, because lights and stop signs and widening the lanes have an adverse impact on a number of things. For example, again, the fire station is there, if you put a light in and traffic is backed up there and there's an emergency, then the fire trucks are not going to be able to get out because the intersection's going to be blocked by a light and so forth. So there's been analysis of those kinds of things, and the conclusion in the TSP is that this is the best choice. But it's not a final choice, it's not a final choice in terms of committing the land, it's not a final choice in terms of the explicit process that needs to be gone through in order to finalize where a road is going to be. This is a preliminary process, so it doesn't need an exception, it can move forward as it does. If the UGB should fail for any reason, then, as I said, there's rules that accommodate how the TSP can be changed in the interim until the UGB question is settled. Coburg, again, has been working on this for a long, long time. The concerns about this were never raised before Coburg, we could have addressed them then, we have addressed them since they've been raised at the planning commission, and now again here. We think that the findings are adequate to justify moving forward. There is in your record a response to Thousand Friends from the City of Coburg that discusses the question of whether an exception is necessary, and makes several arguments to show that it isn't. I won't, for the sake of time, I won't repeat those, but I can assure you that it's Coburg's position that the county commissioners can move forward with the TSP without creating any undue risk for the county, without creating problems for moving forward on either one of these issues. And I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. So we have no one else signed up to speak, so I don't think we need rebuttal, but if there are any questions from the commissioners? So the question then is, do you wish to hold the record open, extend, continue the hearing and hold the record open, close the hearing? Is there some discussion of that at this point? Any recommendations from staff also?
Well, again, I would note that the way that the TSP currently stands, you know, one of the concerns is there's an east-west connector that is currently shown outside the UGB. And so by adopting the TSP, you'd be adopting a road outside the UGB. What staff is saying is, that would have, obviously, I think, clearly, if the UGB isn't expanded, that road would need to go through an exception. The TSP in and of itself doesn't approve that road. And again, legally, you can argue on either side of this. I think Thousand Friends is saying that the TSP is a land use decision, and it requires you go through the exception with the TSP. I think Coburg is arguing, and I think we can make legal findings to support this side as well, that we could adopt the TSP, and frankly, if the UGB expansion isn't approved, there's, it's very unlikely that east-west connector would be built. But there isn't anything, we believe, in the approval of the TSP that authorizes that east-west connector. There's also that frontage road. So I'd remind the board that a few years ago, we adopted the Coburg Interchange Area Management Plan, the IAMP. And in that IAMP, which is a land use document, it notes that frontage road either would have to go through an exception or wait for the UGB expansion to occur. So I don't know that I feel really comfortable pushing you in one way or the other, because I think it is a policy decision. I think you could go ahead and move the TSP forward and approve it. That you could sort of tie it to the UGB expansion and ask us to come back with a third reading and extending the public hearing and keeping the record open, similar to. So I'd have to say, either move it forward or have it follow the same path it did with the UGB expansions.
Commissioner Farr, you had?
Yeah, most of the projects are inside the existing UGB on the TSP that I'm looking at, and really, it's only those two that you're talking about. And the frontage road, I think, is partially inside of the existing UGB, isn't it?
It is.
So it's, the connector is the main issue. Your explanation of that, that if the UGB, depending on how the UGB expansion is approved, there's going to be, potentially going to be an exception for that anyway. I think we're okay moving it forward today, quite frankly, since most of the projects are really contained inside the existing UGB. And then looking at the projects, they're all, I mean, it's hard to argue with any one of them, from the bike loop to, you know, residential park, residential area parking, I mean, it's, so while, there probably isn't a problem holding it over until we discuss the UGB further, I think we could move it forward today. So my, if somebody made a motion to move it forward today, I'd be in favor of that.
So just remember, we still have a public hearing open at this point.
I've spoken so little, I just had to get it over.
Yeah, that's okay. But I'm just, I'm just kind of reminding folks where we are in the process before we make a, you know, the part of our decision is, do we continue the public hearing or not? If we don't continue it, do we hold the public record open or not? You know, and then we can get to a decision whether we want to approve a TSP or not. So that's kind of where we are, you know, do we want to continue the hearing or not? And then we can talk about the record secondary to that. You know, I, you know, understand the independence of the TSP and an urban growth boundary to some degree. Generally, what usually happens is the TSP's, I mean, the urban growth boundary's approved, and the TSP happens later to some degree, with the exception of maybe elements of the TSP needed to support the growth, you know, to identify, you know, road projects or whatever, where they are failing intersections to support the growth in order to meet the transportation planning rule, which I think somewhat is involved in this in some degree. Because one of the things they're talking about is, some of this residential may create problems with Van Dyne and North Coburg, you know, the north Stallings stuff, and then the solution to that is the east-west connector. So, you know, they almost are sort of linked in some ways. So I'm struggling with decoupling them in some ways, although I do understand that you could do the east-west connector just through an exception process, which I think they really need the east-west connector, because I'm all for street connectivity and what it does for traffic planning. So it's better than trying to signalize, it's better to have that connectivity. But that said, to me, it seems like it's a more prudent move for the board just to continue this hearing and hold another reading to the same date we're doing the UGB work. Because I think what we decide relative to UGB may actually impact the TSP. I mean, if, you know, at this point, you know, that would be, my gut reaction is just to continue the public hearing, hold the record open, and have a third reading. Any other thoughts on continuing the hearing and the record? Just, Commissioner Storson.
I see them as rather linked, so I agree with you.
There's someone willing to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion. So with that, I'd like to move the second reading and send you a third reading and public hearing, leaving the record open for ordinance number PA 1314 for December the 8th, 1:30 p.m. at Harris Hall in the afternoon, in the matter of co-adopting the Coburg Transportation System Plan for application within the urbanizable area outside the Coburg city limits, but within the City of Coburg urban growth boundary, and adopting savings and servability clauses.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lydia.
Thank you very much.
So that moves us on to, actually, I want to jump back here a little bit to county council announcements. We skipped over that this morning, and I want to do that real quick before we jump into marijuana. So, Mr. Dingle.
Dear board members, the only announcement that I really have is to give you just a very, very brief update on the Fernridge Public Safety District, and give you just the broadest outline of the process. And I'm going to keep it to just a couple of minutes. We met last Friday?
Friday.
Yes, last Friday, with all of the involved party, county staff, people from the City of Anita, their attorney, the citizen sponsors of it. And essentially, what was arrived at is to explore the process of a 451 service district. We asked for the different, I was asked to outline the critical dates. The first couple of things that have to happen right off the bat are the identification of the boundary, which is, for those of you who are around, and when the Mohawk district was done, it's a meets and bounds description, I have it with the board order, it's seven or eight or nine pages, single-spaced, margin to margin, front and back. It's quite an undertaking. The first step that we identified after that was that the board has to pass what's sort of an initial order, it's not quite the same as an economic feasibility. It's not quite the same as an economic feasibility study, but it's along the same general lines, outlines the general services that are going to be provided, sort of why they're needed, how they're going to be delivered. The really critical timelines are getting, if we were to work backward from the May 17th primary voting day, really, the key dates are getting, we have to arrive at early to mid-January at the latest to get the committee put together, to get the ballot measure done, those sorts of things. And I think we can, I think it's possible to get everything that we have to do on our end before that done by then, but it really does, the one piece that's significant is the City of Anita. And it's my understanding they're going to meet next Monday, is that correct, Commissioner?
Correct, yeah.
So it's on track, we're providing as much assistance as we can. It really is going to depend what the City of Crestwell does. And after that, we can sort of start moving forward. Or City of Anita. That's because I'm looking at Crestwell.
Yeah, but they're thinking of one, too. Commissioner Sorenson.
So, do you have a, I guess, what's the heart of it, like the purpose of the district? Or is that, what's that called, the purpose, the mission? What legally establishes what they do?
It's the, it is the, it'll be the order that you ultimately adopt, but at the initial point, I think you just need to describe, and I think the folks that have been working on this can do this very well, which is to provide law enforcement services, they can provide it very specifically, they can even provide, quite frankly, more detailed information than is required with the 198. When a 198 is going, you actually have to have a three-year line item, budget by budget thing, that's what the people have to do before they can ever even circulate a petition. It's not quite as detailed by the board, so I expect that the information that they have is actually going to be more than what is required, but that'll be presented.
Is this a, the former sheriff, the former county council used the phrase "special law enforcement district," SLED. Is this a SLED or is this some other?
No, it's, it is in Chapter 451, which the title of that are county service districts.
Okay.
So it's a county service district. But when you go down and look at the one, it's called a special law enforcement district, I think is the actual term that it's used as.
Okay. Well, are you at the point where you could share with the board a copy of the proposed board order so we could look at that sort of purpose of the district component and provide you with some feedback if needed?
That is the, that is the very first thing that's going to happen. I haven't done that yet. They're going to, the folks that we're working on are going to send some material. We hope to have that within the next week or two. That's going to be the first thing that the board has to look at.
What's the timeline for us, like up here? What's our timeline to get this sent on its way so that the necessary other parts of the process, the elections folks, the ballot title and all this other sort of stuff that happens?
At the top of my head, I believe there are three, two or three meetings and orders that you have to pass, resolutions that you have to pass.
In December or?
November and December. November or December, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay. November or December.
Yeah, we have to pass that, basically.
451, 185.
195, which is kind of equivalent to that economic analysis sometime late November, early December. And then we have to actually vote to place it on the ballot and appoint, and then also appoint the explanatory committee sometime in early January in order for elections to have the time to prepare to send the ballots to the correct people.
Right. You mentioned, you mentioned that in order to give the people time to circulate, what process do they have in circulating?
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. No, no, what I meant was, I'm sorry, this frequently happens. So let me make it clear. There are two ways that this process can happen. One is a one, what I call 198, which is the one that require, that is, where citizens circulate petitions and they do this very detailed study, then they bring, once they have the requisite number of signatures verified by the clerk, they bring that to the board and ask them to put it on the ballot. The board holds a hearing, you actually give a chance for people to testify, that sort of thing. Or this kind of service district can be initiated and put on the ballot by the board, and that's the process that's happening. So there is no circulating. What Commissioner Bozovic was speaking about was, the clerk recommends that the committee to write the explanatory statement and all those sorts of things be appointed no later than January 4th, because then all those, it's the same deadlines, the same deadlines as for regular initiative measure apply. So the board, the board has its work to do before January 4th. After January 4th, it just sort of hits the election process. It just.
Are you building in a public hearing in your process, even though it's not required, that the board would have an optional public hearing perhaps in Anita to?
There was an assumption there was going to be a public hearing before we voted.
Yeah, I think that's what I understood, when the one that was going to, whether or not to refer it on the ballot.
Right.
Put the ballot.
Yeah, we just.
Put the measure on the ballot.
Okay, very good.
All right, I just wanted to update folks. And if you would, if any of the board members are interested, I can certainly get, Commissioner Sorenson, I have the material from the 1998 one that you could certainly look at. It's going to be very similar to that. It's obviously a different name and different time, but it gives you an idea of what it's going to look like. And if any of the, as a matter of fact, I'll just do that for all the board members and send it as a PDF.
But that was specific to law enforcement, did not have a corrections component?
Right.
Or prosecution or any of these other things that they've talked about.
Right, that's correct. It was a, but it was, yeah, it was a special law enforcement district, hence the acronym SLED. I'm not sure.
Process was similar, though.
Yeah, it was, it was identical.
And the requirements are the exact same in state law. Thank you.
All right.
So we now jump back to Item 12C, which is a work session, discussion, direction on new rules implementing marijuana regulations. And we have Mark Rust. And Mr. Rust.
Thank you, Chair Bozovic and Commissioners. For the record, Mark Rust with Lane County Planning Department. So as you just indicated, we're here again in front of you today to get some more specific direction on the draft regulatory concepts for implementing marijuana legislation and moving those forward through our Planning Commission in a public hearings process. If you recall, we were here in front of you back on September 15th in a work session to get some initial direction from you. At that time, you indicated that generally, a light-touch approach to implementing the regulations. You also requested that we look at the states of Colorado and/or Washington to see how they have implemented. So some of the materials I'll go over today that are in your packet are some of that look at other jurisdictions. Since we met last, and actually since I prepared this packet, the state have adopted the draft Oregon administrative rules for implementing the new law. It's 78 pages of light reading, if you want to see what's all in there. It doesn't all apply to land use, but I have gone through it in detail. So some of what might be in some of the attachments today would be potentially covered under the OARs and may not be necessary to have locally. So I'm going to just jump into Attachment B of your memo. It's the kind of a matrix comparing four different jurisdictions, three in Colorado and one in Washington. And I did that, I know Commissioner Farr specifically asked me to look at Arapahoe County in Colorado. I did that. It's not on the matrix because they actually adopted an ordinance to prohibit the marijuana uses in Arapahoe County. In actually mapping the different counties around the Denver area, other than Denver County, which includes the City of Denver, all the surrounding counties in the Denver area prohibited all the marijuana uses except for Denver County. And then unconnected to Denver County is the, and I have a map, but Boulder, the county that Boulder is in, that county has also allowed in the City of Boulder. But anyway, for whatever it's worth, these, Boulder County is on here, King County, Washington, Aurora, Colorado, a city jurisdiction, not a county, and then another county, Pla Borah County, Colorado, which is somewhat south of the Denver area, more rural, more of a farming-type community, from what I could gather. So, but really, all that's just to demonstrate that there's a pretty wide array of different types of provisions, different jurisdictions have adopted. I took an attempt in Attachment A to then classify those different provisions, as well as some other provisions, into three different columns of oversight types of provisions that we could look at here locally. A level one with minimal oversight, level two, a little bit more oversight, and then level three would be a very heavy-handed maximum type of oversight regulations. I tried at the time, I created this to compare it to the unadopted draft OARs that were in existence at the time. Like I mentioned, they have adopted the OAR since. Two things I just wanted to point out about the OARs, one specifically about the tier one and tier two canopy size limitations. They did come up with the numbers for those, for the OARs, and they're different for whether it's an indoor grow operation versus an outdoor grow operation. A tier one is the smaller, up to 5,000 square feet of canopy size for indoor, and tier two, the larger maximum of 10,000 square feet for indoor. Outdoor canopy size is tier one, the smaller, up to 20,000 square feet outdoor, tier two, 40,000 square feet maximum. Basically, the county leading the charge in Oregon for all of this is Clackamas County. Everybody's to some degree following their lead. I've been tracking very closely with what they're doing. They're going to their board, I believe, either tomorrow or Thursday, and I'm not sure they're going to get the final adoption, but they're very close. And the other one I've been tracking very closely is Deschutes County, and they're following Clackamas County's lead as well for the most part. But the one thing I want to mention is, Clackamas County held a task force meetings, a series of them, back in August, represented some of the industry, the public, and other, the sheriff was involved, and different public entities. Just to give you a sense, from the industry folks that participated in those task force meetings, for a 10,000-square-foot canopy size, tier two indoor grow operation, the industry folks thought they would need a 40,000-square-foot building size to grow a 10,000-square-foot canopy. So canopy is really just the footprint of the plants, the drip line, I guess, of the plants themselves, not necessarily the footprint of the building, just to kind of touch on. We're not talking about building size. Anyway, for whatever that's worth, the one thing that you may see from the Attachment B from comparing Colorado and Washington is, the majority of those, they did not allow production or growing of marijuana in their rural residential or equivalent zones. The majority of Oregon counties that I've been looking at are proposing to allow some level of production or growing in the rural residential zones in those different counties. A lot of them are limiting that to a specific building size and much smaller than, say, just a pure tier one allowed. They may say, I think it's Tillman County is proposing a 3,000-square-foot maximum building size for production in the rural residential zones with other parameters. So, again, probably more information than you need at this point, but just so you understand, there's a wide variety of different ways that things will be discussed or likely be discussed at our Planning Commission in the public hearings process. We are planning to move forward with that, pending your direction today on November 17th, and hold a work session with the Planning Commission and a public hearing. There's some sense of expediency with adopting some provisions by the first of the year, with the concern that there could be unintended consequences of not having some provisions in place. Starting January 4th, the OLCC will start taking applications for licenses, and somebody could walk in our front door at the customer service center on January 4th as well and submit an application, a land use application to us for a use under our existing zoning code regulations for certain things that may not ultimately be a use in a zone that the board or the Planning Commission thinks is a good idea to have allowed based on our previous conversation or what may come out of the public hearing process. So we are trying to move quickly. We are looking today to you for kind of a head nod or agreement that this seems like the right direction, and with the plan to hold the public hearing at the Planning Commission, hopefully move them through the process rather quickly and get back to the board at the latest on your December 15th meeting agenda for a public hearing in front of you for ultimate adoption of an ordinance to implement new regulations. So with that, we have kind of informally and casually contacted, actually, a couple of our planning commissioners, including the chair, has reached out to us with some concerns about the timing and the depth of the subject. And they wanted to know from the board if there's specific things the board thinks the Planning Commission should focus on, that you could provide them direction to, given the limited amount of time, to kind of pinpoint anything you may have a concern with. So with that, that's all I have. I'm available for questions and go from there.
So I'll want to just jump in with one question real quick. You gave us Attachment C, which was kind of a recommended framework?
Correct.
Do you have a copy of the matrix you gave us a couple of months back that showed what's allowable in each zone if we don't make changes?
I do have a copy, yes.
Okay. That would have been useful to compare the two, but side by side a little bit, but I think my memory is pretty good that it was basically allowed everywhere except for in industrial zones where we really want to put it, and it was, in rural residential, it was basically, everything was allowed in rural residential, including a retail license if you got a special use permit.
Right. And one of the specific areas in my mind we would want to look closely at potentially adopting a provision for is not allowing the uses as home occupations, because I think that's where people could apply under today's regulations to say, hey, I want to open up a home occupation retail marijuana shop in the rural residential zone. And I think we'd have a hard time arguing against that under today's regulations, so. On that Attachment C, I didn't kind of go into that, but there's some, depending on which zones we're talking about and the uses, and specifically to industrial use, since you brought that up, the whole column for the four different license types for industrial zones says allowed with a special use permit. That's not 100% accurate in that there are situations where it would be an outright permitted use in the industrial zone, even under new regulations and/or today, but that is under, for existing buildings, if somebody has a pre-existing building that otherwise met the criteria, they can move into that industrial building, start a production use without a special use permit. Really, the SUP requirement is for a new development type of scenario in the industrial zone.
Great. Mr. Farr?
Thank you. So January 4th is when state regulations are going to hit. So anything we need to do has to, that's the drop dead date as to implementation. And you mentioned November 17th is that joint meeting with the Planning Commission and public hearing. And that's already scheduled for the board and the Planning Commission. Does that give us enough time between now and January 4th?
So the November 17th date is just the Planning Commission.
Okay. Now, is there a suggestion in the, do I see a suggestion that it be a joint meeting?
The joint meeting is thought to be for December 15.
December 15. And does that allow us enough time to implement anything before January 4th?
Well, we, so we've had a meeting with our legal counsel. Mr. Voorhees may be here today, but we think there is enough time. We think you would have to adopt. We think you would have to adopt that ordinance with an emergency clause if the board thought they could get there. But it's barely enough time.
Okay. And so with an emergency clause, we wouldn't have to have a second reading, is that right?
So you, and you would actually have a first reading on December 1st.
On December 1st.
Correct.
Prior to the joint hearing.
The emergency clause just allows you to, normally, ordinance is going to affect 30 days after they're enacted. If the board finds there's an emergency and the need is there, you can adopt it, have it be effective immediately.
Then, okay. That's all the questions over this. Just the timing of it. Clearly, based upon the question that Commissioner Bozovich asked about what would it be like if we didn't do anything, we certainly don't want to see that happen.
Yeah. It's actually inverse to what I think we want to have happen.
Precisely.
The other timing, I'm sorry. The other timing issue I was going to refer to is that the, it's not quite a drop dead date in terms of the adoption of it. What happens as of the 4th is, it's, these uses are allowed. And if you don't have regu, and applicants who apply are entitled to the law we have locally, that's on the books when they apply. And so any restrictions you want to adopt, in other words, you have the situation that people are being grandfathered in for uses that you may not want, if you wait months down the road. At the same time, if you adopt changes to the code on the 5th of January, for example, then you'd only be looking at one day's worth of potential conflicts there.
I think that the ultimate goal, I beg your pardon, is to have, the ultimate goal that we, is that the product is going to be used responsibly, and that it's going to be sold responsibly, and it's going to be distributed responsibly. And we've had conversations with people who have been, who have experienced doing it in other states. And the, you know, my main concern is that we don't have product going out the back door, and that we don't have product getting in the hands of minors, and that, that, you know, the people who are growing it, selling it, and distributing it are trained to do so in a fashion that makes certain that the undesired effect doesn't take place. So I'm concerned that we're kind of pushing it close right now. And I'm, Mr. Chair, I'm in favor of moving as quickly as we can toward, to the point of adding meetings if we need to.
Commissioner Stewart?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just have a question that I support. We need to get this to planning commission and then get this hopefully adopted before January 4th. But I do have some questions here as I think through some of the recommended framework. And I'm, can you kind of help me just a little bit? So we got somebody that grows a product. It can be grown on forest zones and farm zones with, appears to be a canopy size. And when you say includes primary processing, what is that? Is that cutting that off at the base? I mean, what is?
So because the state defines the use as a farm use, production of it, it qualifies under all the farm use rules, which that primary processing language is out of state law for farm use. The way they define primary processing as applied to marijuana crop would essentially be harvesting it, drying it, and bulk packaging it.
Okay.
It's not secondary processing that would include packaging for retail or extraction of oil or any of that kind of processing.
Okay. So then that moves into the process piece, which allows those secondary products that you're talking about. Okay, okay, I'm good. I'm getting, I'm looking at this, I'm thinking, okay, you're going to grow the plant. I guess you can take the plant over to the processing site. And then you bring the plant back because your wholesaler might be able to buy it there. So to me, it seemed a little bit confusing, but it makes sense now. The only thing, I guess, I would add to the planning commission discussion about this is, you know, I've heard from multiple different locations, it appears that people have started growing already in anticipation of, I guess, the recreational use that was available in October. So we've, I've noticed some incompatibilities or some concerns with people. One is, is I guess there's a period of time when the odor's a lot stronger. I didn't, I didn't get any complaints until, I assume, towards the harvest time of this product. And then there was, you know, quite a few people that were concerned about the odor in their neighborhood. So I think that that should be something that's discussed with the planning commission on, you know, should there be setback? Should there be odor control plans, as I see in other jurisdictions? And I think the rest of this seems to be kind of, makes a lot of sense. So I just like, because those are the concerns that I'm hearing from the, from the people. I don't see how, I mean, security might be a concern. You know, should there be additional fencing or something that's required in this product? I don't know. So that might be another area that they have a discussion about. So those are the things that I would recommend to the planning commission.
Okay.
Mr. Sorensen?
I'll pass. So I'll jump in a second. Looking at your proposed framework, I have one amendment I'd like to propose to it, and that's to not allow any residential production. I mean, 20,000 square feet of outdoor in an R1 zoning, that's half your lot. I just don't think it's appropriate in, you know, in an RR zoning at all, other than personal production. I think there's a, we can't limit the actual personal amount that you're allowed to grow under the new, the new law. But I don't think we should be, even the Tier 1 is problematic for me in rural residential. I mean, this is, this is a cash business of a high value. And I think with that, we need to make sure we amend our home occupation to specifically exempt, or exclude, exclude, I guess is the word, marijuana production, you know, and any, all those, retailing, anything to do with marijuana, retail, recreational marijuana. Because I really think that, that's, that was the whole premise on us trying to do some time, place, and manners. We really didn't want these, you know, high-impact businesses locating in rural residential. And we just had a discussion about, you know, we really want those exception lands available for possible, you know, urbanization later and all that stuff. Really, that's not where, where it belongs in urbanization as residential. So as you get, a lot of that rural residential tends to be where you're going to urbanize towards. So that's just, and I would like to see the sense of board on that. And if that, that would be where I'd like to see the focus of the planning commission is making that decision. And this is a question somewhat. Did they specifically exclude marijuana production from qualifying in dwellings on resource land? I thought they did, but I just want to make sure. Because if they didn't, I want to make sure we did.
They do.
Okay.
So you're, you're.
Specific income requirement to have a dwelling in a, yeah, farm, yeah.
That is not allowed.
Yeah, okay, good. I just want to make sure they, that actually stayed in there in, you know, because they were still writing a lot of rules. And I can't, keeping track of which rules were just talked about and which rules were actually adopted, sometimes it's tough for me. So don't, they don't need to talk about that at all. I'm glad it's in there. The other, conversely, the other thing I'd like to have us look at, and I don't think, this is not something we have to do by January 4th so much, but I believe that they draft rules allow a jurisdiction to ask for actually the canopy size to be increased. And I feel like there's no reason to have a canopy size limitation if it's in an industrial zone. You know? Why 20,000? You know, so for me, that's a secondary issue we can look at later. And I don't know when, when those draft rules will be finalized enough for us to make that request. Because I think I understand under the draft rules, it has to be a request from the jurisdiction to appeal to a larger canopy size.
The draft rules talk about the local jurisdiction adopting an ordinance to allow an increased canopy size. And then based on the adoption of that ordinance, requesting from OLCC for them to issue a license to do.
So would it, would it be difficult to wrap that increased canopy size into the rural industrial, in that, in that Attachment C?
From my standpoint, no. I don't think it would. And I just would ask for clarification too on, you mentioned industrial zones. Would you, would you also feel that there should be no canopy size limit in, say, EFU zone? Where it could be either indoor or outdoor?
Yeah. In, in the resource zones and industrial, it should have been more clear.
So both.
Yeah.
And regardless if it's indoor or outdoor?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, we don't, we don't put a limitation on any other crop in an EFU zone.
Sure.
And there's, there's the assumption if you're going to live next to EFU land, you're going to deal with what's on EFU land. I mean, I watched the dust clouds come off the grass seed fields into, into a lot of other areas that are zoned differently. But that's just, you know, that's part of being out in the country and living next to a grass seed farm. And if there's odors that come off of a, of a marijuana field, that's just part of being there. I mean, could be pigs, could be in Iowa. So, so I would, I would, and I, I'm just one commissioner out of five up here, but I would recommend not allowing any production in residential zones other than the personal limits that are allowed under the law. And then also adding in the industrial forest and farm zones, no canopy limitation for, for, for grow operations. And in that way, we can make the appeal later on.
If I could just comment one thing. I've heard from actually quite a few people involved in the industry already. And the only comment I'll say that resonated a little bit is that primarily where the production is happening now for medical is in the rural residential zones. And it's in people's garages, it's in their backyard in the sheds. And granted, there's canopy size questions. But anyway, for what it's worth.
And that's where I get most of my complaints.
Yeah. And if we, my concern would be is if we prohibit it in the rural residential zone, it's likely to just continue on the black market in the residential zones anyway.
We can't control the medical grow. We have, we have no limitation. This is specific to recreational grow. Those operations can still continue if it's a medical grow. With the proper medical cards and all that stuff, we have, we have very little control under state law over that industry.
Exactly right on the medical grow. One of the things to consider, though, as a default position, since this is being fast-tracked to be in effect on January 4th, is you can always be more conservative and restrictive initially from the standpoint of Measure 49. The county's at less risk of a claim if we loosen the regulations. But if we learn next year that we need to increase a regulation, we could be at risk of a Measure 49 claim. But being more restrictive initially.
Maybe to a extent.
Less risk as we go down the road and learn more next year.
I think we're striking a balance between being restrictive in residential zones, but being actually less restrictive in the other zones than, than are allowed. There, is that, am I summarizing well for the remainder of the board? Or is there, is there a difference of opinion on this particular issue?
I'm finding this, for the planning commission to look at it, doesn't mean that it comes to us or it's recommended to us. But I'm supportive of them looking at it.
Timing is my only question. And medical and recreational marijuana plants are very different, right? They look so very different from each other.
Actually, a lot of medical is grown with no THC. It's the cabinanoids, if I pronounce that correctly, that there, a lot of the medical's after. So if there's no further direction for staff, you guys think you understand the direction?
Yep. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. So that gets us back to commissioners' business from this morning. We skipped any announcements from the commissioners? I don't see any, any future agenda team request or work session request. So then we'll move on to review of assignments. Oh, God, I almost forgot.
Alex is.
Alex is sitting there going, well, they're, they're forgetting about me.
You didn't feed me.
Mr. Kyler, sorry about that, Item 13A. I'm forgetting about people in the queue, and now I'm forgetting about staff in the, in the audience. Report state and federal legislative priorities and recommendations. And we have Alex Kyler here, our intergovernmental relations manager. Take it away, Alex.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And board members, Alex Kyler, your intergovernmental relations manager. I've got, you've got a packet in front of you that I think is fairly self-explanatory. Essentially, it's in preparation for both our federal trip to Washington DC, part of the United Front, as it's typically referred to, and then the state priorities for the upcoming short session of the Oregon Legislature. Really, a, a regular session now of the Oregon Legislature. It'll be the 79th Assembly. So there's, there's, there's sort of two separate items that are, that you'll find on Attachment A, the federal priorities. The next is the state priorities. And I did want to note for you that both of these, Pages 4 and 5, were items that were reviewed at the Legislative Committee meeting we held on October 22nd. What I did want to bring to your attention was an addition fairly late in the game on Page 6 that was not addressed by Legislative Committee. And so I'll get to that as I get through this presentation. So with your permission, Mr. Chair, I'll just jump into the federal priorities and give a brief overview.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. So the board will recall, typically, we put together a book for the United Front. They've sort of looked somewhat different over the years. We're actually getting smaller and smaller. This coming year, the, the partners have decided there will actually be sort of two different books. One will be focused on infrastructure needs for what's being termed as the River Districts, which is an outcome of the Sustainable Planning Grant that we received from HUD several years ago, with a focus on infrastructure projects, essentially going along Franklin Boulevard and starting at the federal courthouse, winding down to Springfield and turning south and heading on out to Buford Recreation Area. So there will be, these are, these, this part of the request is sort of in advance and anticipating needs and desires that we hope to accomplish by the beginning of the 2021 World Track Meet. Because our visitors will be right there on Franklin Boulevard. And when they're not at the Track Meet, essentially, they'll have the opportunity to cross Franklin Boulevard and go either straight, left, or right. And so we're really trying to focus on those kinds of projects. That said, we will also have the traditional book where we speak to sort of the more policy-oriented issues that affect the county and that we're anticipating being priorities for the, for the county. So one of the things that you'll see here then is, at the top of the list, is timber policy. And I did want to go over timber policy just to a degree to suggest that, at least what I'm seeing is less than us, now, you know, as of today, Secure Rural Schools is expired, right? right? So it, it actually did expire on October 1st of 2015. We will still get a payment probably around Christmas time, but that's leftover from the legislation. There is no more SRS. And at least the signals that we're seeing coming out of a Republican-dominated House and Senate is, is not much appetite for traditional SRS as an appropriation from the Treasury. If anything, we, we might see it as a, as a piece of a bridge funding attached to what I would typify as an active management mill. And so the sense is that we've seen a couple of proposals for management of both national forests.
I think your battery just died.
Sorry.
It's been a long meeting.
National Forest Lands. Is that better?
I've heard of a three dog night, but not a three meeting, a three microphone meeting.
So we've seen a couple of proposals that have already been pitched. One that I think the board actually did write a letter of support on House Bill, or House Resolution 2647. And that, that bill actually came out of the House and is waiting for activity if it comes in on the Senate side. But at any rate, the, the sense that I'm getting is that the, that the board should be bringing forward advocacy that revolves around focusing more on getting back to actually active management rather than seeking a traditional return to Secure Rural Schools payments. I think the, the way I'd characterize it, we've seen now 15 years of SRS, 15 years of declining management, coupled with the drought and whatever's happening with it, with the climate, we're seeing more and more wildfires. And it just appears to be a policy that isn't particularly working out very well. And so I tried to sort of suggest to you some of the items that we would put into the book. And this isn't all that different from past priorities within the book. We've, we began talking about active management within the auspices of the United Front, really probably four or five years ago. But there's always been sort of more of a sense that SRS was still somewhat alive in the Congress. And my sense now is that it's just, it, it just, I don't hear people talking about it. I don't see sort of what proposals waiting for, something, something to attach to. More so, like I said, I think we'll see out of a Republican-dominated House and Senate more activity related to or more interest in bills that actually serve to do something about management practices. Another one that we have taken in the past is the second item, primary care providers. We are doing better. I think you heard this morning, some presentation from staff about some of their accomplishments with respect to getting folks who have, who are on Medicaid ascribe to a primary care provider. And there is some additional work going on to try to help support primary care providers that are actually more like nurse practitioners and physician's assistants. Nonetheless, I think we had a lot of reception to this issue last, when we were there last year. And there are many across the nation who are seeking changes to the way graduate medical education is, is regulated in the United States. The third item, gun violence, is something that we have also taken previously. We didn't highlight this very much last year, but it seems with the events occurring in Roseburg that now is a good time to bring this back to the attention of our delegation. Essentially, the issue is, is that the only gun tax in the nation is the Pittman Robertson Act, was passed in 1937. It's earmarked, the revenues are earmarked particularly for hunter safety, for shooting range development, wildlife conservation programs. And it would seem to make sense from talking to staff that especially focusing on youth mental health programs, in-school mental health provision, teacher training, those kinds of things are really what's, what the experts are thinking is, is necessary to curb, in particular, the school violence that we've seen in the past couple of years.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Thorson.
That, that is the, the one that I carried back to the, to NACO or similar to the one that I carried back to NACO.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Thorson, exactly the issue that you carried back to NACO, I think, two years ago.
Two years ago.
Yeah.
And it was, it got some traction, but it got stalled a little bit by a couple of states that didn't have, that had some issues that weren't able to address.
Okay, great. Commissioner Thorson.
You mentioned that the idea of, of decoupling or giving counties appropriations based upon federal lands in their, in their communities, probably dead during the current Congress, but that, but that perhaps active management bills dealing with federal lands, maybe federal forest lands in particular, might fare better. And I was watching a C-SPAN debate on a House bill, and the main person carrying the bill was one Congressman Westerman of Arkansas. And Mr. Westerman, or Congressman Westerman, received his master's degree in, in forestry from Yale University and was speaking on this bill. He's a member of the Natural Resources Committee in the U.S. House of Representatives. Got the bill out of committee, got the bill on the floor. That's where I learned about it. He's debating the bill. It passes the House of Representatives. What's the status of that bill in the Senate? And is that really going anywhere? My understanding is it's comparable to the bill that Congressman Hastings got passed in the, in the Congress that was, the previous Congress, the 2013, 14 Congress. What's, what you understand is that not only, and this is kind of what I'm seeing, not only aren't they going to pass money for us, like SRS, such as was signed into law by President Clinton, they're not doing that. They're, they're passing these manage, you use the term, active management bills, but they, but they, they die in the Senate.
Correct. Chairman Bozovich and Commissioner Thorson, I think you're probably referring to H.R. 2647, which did pass the House. It's, I, I would, I would not characterize it as similar to the bill that Representative, or Congressman Hastings passed in the previous Congress. That one did, that did pass had very prescriptive language about harvest requirements and targets for each national forest. H.R. 2647, inasmuch, it does a couple of things in terms of ending fire borrowing, which is a popular, popular bill also in the Senate side. I think it's probably its most contentious piece is that it does limit the ability to litigate, to bring suit in certain cases. And so that's probably the language that is causing some consternation on the Senate side. And frankly, in terms of its status, that's exactly it. It has passed the House. It is awaiting a hearing on the Senate side. I could get back to you on which particular committee it's been assigned to, because I've seen it, but I can't, I can't bring it up to the top of my head right now.
Is it pending in the committee that Senator Murkowski chairs, the Natural Resources Committee?
You'd think that's where it was, but I can't, I don't have it in front of me, and I'm, I'm not convinced that it was actually there as a first assignment, but that's, that's where you'd think it would be.
Yep.
But it is a little different than that bill that you referenced, that Congressman Hastings was able to get out of committee. Now, H.R. 2647, interestingly, does have 19 Democratic cosponsors, including Congressman DeFazio and Congressman Schrader. I shouldn't say cosponsors, sorry. 19 votes to get it out of the House, including the votes of Congressman Schrader and Congressman DeFazio. Congressman Walden from Oregon also voted for the measure. So moving on, we had an item that came up in one of your Housing Authority meetings where it talked about administrative overhead and reimbursements from HUD for administrative overhead having to do particularly with Section 8 housing. So I've added that to the agenda. I did get a little bit of language out of staff from H&amp;HS about supporting the President's, the fiscal year 16 budget proposal for 500 million for support services for veterans' families. And then juvenile justice, I think we seem to have pretty good meetings with the Department of Justice and their, their juvenile justice folks. And I think we would be well to bring to them this apparently sort of chronic situation that we have in Lane County with very few treatment beds for youth in terms of drug dependency and services to help kids, kids get off of drugs. So I don't know the, the, I will just tell you that in terms of this Rivers District concept, the priorities for Lane County would include Glenwood Place, the HACSA project in Glenwood, and then winding down south a little bit, and then turning the corner at the old Brings site is the, what we refer to as the Confluence Project. But it encompasses both Confluence Projects of the Nature Conservancy, which was here a couple of weeks ago, and you heard from, as well as Friends of Beaufort Park, which actually we transferred that property to. But as you recall, they're going to be working on Phase 2 project next summer, Phase 3 project the year after. And I thought what was particularly interesting about that presentation was their discussion about ultimately turning it over to a public agency for management as a recreational site. And the fact that there were a couple of agencies that needed to be involved in that transition, those included the Oregon Water, oh, Web, Oregon Watershed Enhancement Board, I think, and then the other one being the Bonneville Power Administration. And so it may be that we want to, while we're in DC, introduce ourselves to the folks at BPA, just to start to sort of set that stage for, whether it's Lane County or somebody else, but what sorts of things would they be looking for in terms of that transition into a, more of a recreation area? So any questions on the federal issues?
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Alex is Springfield, are they taking back CLT?
Chairman Bozovich and Commissioner Lichen, I don't know that, when I initially talked to our lobbyists in DC about that emphasis of CLT, the Cross Limited Timber, their response is really, look, you've gotten the designation, the federal designation as a investing in, in a communities manufacturing partnership. Go ahead and let's let that implementation run its course. That we're really dealing with agencies, there's not a whole lot of sort of federal work that, that's needing to be done. So that's the charge that we've got. And I think more so, you're going to see Springfield focusing on things along this in line with their work for the, with the HUD grant. So Glenwood redevelopment certainly, I think, is going to be higher on their priority. I don't, haven't talked to them since they got the bad news about their Tiger grant. I do know that, for example, the mayor and a couple of staff people were back in DC last week, as was our Sarah Case, and at a, at a summit, the Investing in Manufacturing Communities Partnership. So as those opportunities arise, I think we will still continue to take advantage of them in DC.
Wouldn't CLT be a nice hook when we're talking about active management?
It would.
Okay.
And in fact, we did have a brief conversation about the opportunity, perhaps. We've seen some other collaboratives, what are so-called collaboratives that exist in other parts of Oregon, where, for example, a mill might have been threatened without the ability for people of sort of disparate belief systems to come together and say, okay, can we agree on a flow of material into this particular mill? That might be a model that we could employ here to ensure that certain timber sales that would otherwise be controversial could be directed into this manufacturing stream. I think we're fairly early in the process to know if that's something that's needed, but I am, did learn that the only mill that's operating, the one down in, in.
Riddle.
Riddle, is actually buying its timber out of Canada. So it does seem a little bit like, okay, this, could we, could we not, could we source some domestic lumber for that at least?
And there's a reason why they're buying their timber out of Canada.
Yeah.
They're not harvesting on federal land, so I would be too.
Yeah.
Clever them. So anyway, I know it's in infancy, but, and while that's the only certified mill, there really isn't a distribution network, but it's the interesting topic of conversation, especially on the Senate side.
Well, it seems like it would support sort of the, the perspective that I'm, I'm outlining here, that I think that, you know, would be well for the county to embrace.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that one of the big issues is going to be pushing the building code side to get it as an acceptable alternative material, because it's a fascinating material in that it's actually got a lower carbon footprint than steel and concrete construction. And at the same time, you're, you're doing active management that may prevent forest fires and also release carbon. So for those, those that are worried, worried about carbon footprint, CLT is a great, great activity. So you want to move on to the state?
I would. Okay. So on the state side, courthouse funding, I've already set the stage for working on courthouse funding for this session. You may recall that when I did the wrap-up presentation to the board from last legislature, from the last legislature, this bond sale that we missed being a part of won't occur until March of 2017. So the, the February 2016 legislature should give us an opportunity to get back onto that schedule for the March 17 bond sale. And we have done a number of things to try to support that. Chairman Bozovich and Chief Justice, or excuse me, Presiding Judge, Rasmussen convened a meeting of legislators here in the courthouse this summer. We had a really good tour. We continue to advocate for this. And I think if we continue to sort of keep the, the pressure up, we, we will at least, you know, elevate it to a conversation level during the 16th session. The other, there's a couple of other items here, the next one being concealed weapons permits. There is not a, there is, there was a court case about the issuance of a, of a concealed weapon permit in Lane County. County Council came to me with a suggestion for how to fix what the judge alluded to in the findings for that case. There isn't a bill that I'm aware of that will be relating to concealed weapons permitting during the 2016 legislature. And that's important because during the 16th legislature, the short session, legislators are limited to two bills each that they can have drafted, and committees, three bills each. So they're really trying to narrow down the number of bills in play. But I thought it was important to bring it to you because I think that there probably will be ongoing conversations about firearm regulation in the 16th session. And if there is an opportunity for a bill that would have the right relating to clause, we might be able to get something inserted that would, that would have an impact on that particular item. Again, the next item, not a bill in play, but it is something that touches Lane County operations on a number of fronts, and that's drug takeback, particularly prescription drugs. Envision a situation where a loved one has passed away and you're left with sort of this cabinet full of prescription drugs. Right now, there's not a lot of great options for how to conveniently get rid of those drugs. We do have a bin for collecting unused drugs down at the sheriff's office. There are bins around in other police agencies, but the, the issue is, is just like in the old days of, prior to the permanent facilities for household hazardous waste management, we're capturing just a very small percentage of these materials. And so there's a number of folks who'd like to work on creating a regulatory framework that would allow for more convenient disposal and more industry-backed disposal function. So what we've seen in the past, things like computers, paint, in particular, both have what are called stewardship organizations that were created by the legislature. And so these are, these are like a industry-supported company that provides services to the industry as a whole to take back discarded products and leave them for proper disposal. So the idea here would be to, to, to create a stewardship organization for prescription drugs. The Association of Oregon Counties has begun to work on this, but at least to our knowledge, there's nobody at this point willing to sponsor such a bill. Commercial development in unincorporated communities is one that we've already talked about in the previous sessions, and we've run into in several cases in Lane County where that legis, the statutory limit on how big a footprint a building can have in an unincorporated community has led to many people deciding, being unable to develop their property. So there could be, there's sort of two routes here. One is to pursue a rule change through the Department of Land Conservation and Development. The second. The second is to pursue a piece of legislation to change statute. This, Mr. Chair, you may remember, came up at a District 5 meeting of AOC a couple of years ago. The Confluence Project Phase 2 funding, this is an item that you did hear about when the Nature Conservancy presented to you last week. If you recall, that Phase 2 project was the one that they're doing jointly with the Friends of Beaufort Park. They're about halfway, my understanding, to their goal of raising $1.5 million. And so it seems like it would be appropriate for us to try to leverage some amount of dollars out of legislature if that opportunity arises to assist them in that goal. Again, getting to 2021, I think in particular with that project, would be a really neat opportunity for the county to provide, you know, some great places for our visitors to visit. And then the other thing is the continuing priorities. So again, if we've had projects that the board has asked me to go up to Salem to try to get done, and we, for whatever reason, have failed, they continue to stay on the priority list unless, you know, for some reason, they're, they're just completely undoable. But I think I've listed here the ongoing priorities that we, that we would still have in play. And then finally, is the one that did not get in front of the legislative committee, was the constitutional referral of a minimum property tax rate. This was something that I think the number of commissioners were aware of. Last session, there was House Resolution 21, which had the proper language to be a constitutional referral. It was introduced as a bill, but never did have a hearing. And the proponents of that concept to create a $2 minimum property tax in Oregon, after the vote of a necessary to amend the Constitution, would like to, are trying to get that introduced again this session. Apparently, they do have a willing sponsor for the measure. There's a lot of work that's being done in the background, trying to get opponents to at least go neutral on the question. So I thought it was important to bring it in front of legislative committee because things will unfold very quickly in February. Typically, what you'll see is, you know, if the bill, if a bill has not received a hearing and is moving by the end of the first week, it's, it's pretty much dead, given that it's only a four-week-long session. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. So I'm supportive of the priorities as outlined, both the federal and state. I will add that I think we may need to maybe extend our concealed weapons item. I'd like to also look to see if we can have a requirement to have not only a gun safety class be a requirement, but also a class on the law in the state of Oregon relative to the use of deadly force. Utah and other states have similar laws. It's amazing that somebody could get a concealed permit and not understand when they're allowed to use it legally. So might want to just add, I would support adding that, but that, seeing there is no bills we're relating to right now, that's really not an immediate priority change on this, this particular document.
Well, Mr. Chair, I think what I had envisioned is if you, if you give your support of this agenda, then I can start to sort of seek out more so to get a sense of, it shouldn't be that difficult to find out if somebody has a bill that they're readying for introduction and then get with them to see how willing they would be to accept an amendment or to help, have us help craft that as it moves forward. And I think that can be done fairly easily and readily. It's just, I didn't want to do it until, you know, you guys have seen this and approved it.
Any other questions or comments? Do you want a motion and a vote to approve the priorities? Would that be helpful to you?
That would be helpful.
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. You have your direction.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, can I just follow up by saying, we do have, the scheduling of the United Front trip is still not quite nailed down. We've had a little bit of a challenge because of each of the partners has commitments in later part of January and February, in particular, in February due to the presence of the short session. I did talk to the, our lobbyist this morning, and she is recommending that we do focus on going that first week of February, that there's, given the Martin Luther King holiday and the congressional calendar for the week of the 25th, the week, and then, and then their congressional calendar during March, she really thinks that February is the window, and particularly that first week in February. I think that that would be, present a big challenge for me to be able to go to D.C. that week, given the priorities that we have and the speed with which the short session evolves. And so we're talking and staff about, we do have now Devin Ashbridge, who has also previously used to staff the United Front trip for Springfield School District. Greg Rickoff, also well-versed in federal issues. Both those individuals I've talked to about potentially staffing the trip. And so I think those conversations are ongoing, but I wanted to alert the board that that, the nature of these conversations has been fairly fluid, but I think we're starting to get sort of looking like the recommendation would be that week of February 1st.
Commissioner Lichen.
Real quickly, so just curious if our county administrator with his Wisconsin connections somehow has aligned to the new speaker or not? I don't know that, so, or if you're, obviously with communication with your former boss, you know, if, it would be kind of interesting. I don't know if you'd have time to go to United Front or not, but just curious if there's a, there's a relationship there or not. It'd be kind of, kind of fun to
I had a meeting with him the other day. He said, oh, excuse me, I got to take this call from Paul.
A lot of people claiming to have allegiances and alliances to the new speaker. So we will have that conversation.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Alex. So now I can move to review of assignments. Mr. Murkowski.
We're down, we're down to one mic here. I think we have to talk fast.
And Pat's got to leave in five minutes.
A pile of discharged microphones. Mr. Chair, the only items that I heard for follow-up as the board took action on were Items 12A and B. Of course, we'll report back with a third reading on December 8th for both of those items, and then on 12C, we will be back after the item on marijuana regulations goes to the Planning Commission on December 15th, I believe, was the, was the direction by the board. And I didn't hear any other assignments.
No assignments? Any other business for the board? We are adjourned. Made it before 5:00.